Good morning, everyone. We're going to bring the media, the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the Board of Health to order today is Thursday, February 21st, 2019. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room, 851 East Williams Street in Carson City. And we're also on the cable, if you get cable, and streaming on the Internet.
Talk closer to the mic.
And we have, the mics are supposed to automatically adjust for where you are.
Well.
But, okay, who can't hear?
I can.
John?
There you go.
I got my mic right here.
All right. Can we have a roll call? Aubrey, how are you?
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Supervisor Gyoemi?
I'm here.
Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Kroll.
Here, thanks Aubrey. All right, let's, is Fred here? Fred, come on up. Fred Kingman, the Prodigal Church. Couldn't you get a start of Alf today?
Let's change the mic or...
Yeah, just hit the, touch the mic there, the button there.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, let's pray. Father, we come before you today and we just thank you for today. We thank you that today is a gift from you, Lord. I thank you for our leaders, our mayor, our supervisors, those who work and lead in our city, Lord, first responders, those who work in education, healthcare, business owners, developers, Lord, thank you for all these men and women who are here to serve us and to help us. And Lord, I pray today that you'd give them wisdom in accordance with James, Chapter 1. It says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, let them ask God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given to him." Lord, we ask today that they would have wisdom to make good decisions, that they would have unity and understanding, they would be effective, Lord. We ask that your spirit would be here filling this room. And, Lord, we also lift up the family of Phil Patley, Lord, who died this last week in Washoe Valley. We pray that you'd bring them comfort, you would help them to grieve, and, Lord, you bring around them those that they need in this time. Lord, we love you, I thank you for you and for Jesus Christ, and I pray that he would be exalted today. In his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Fred, very much.
Thank you.
John, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll now move on to item number five. If you can't hear me, just raise your hand or throw something, but don't hit anybody else, you can hit me. All right, let's, on public comment, the public's invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this public body. Any public comments this morning? Anybody want to talk about the weather? Anybody want to talk about streets? Anybody want to talk about ice?
Darren's going, no, we don't want to talk about it.
All right. I don't see anybody, but we'll take up, we take, we take public testimony generally on our, when we go through each of the agenda items, and we'll take public testimony at the, at the end, and we will also do the same when we do the Board of Health. Let's take up six possible approval of the minutes of January 17th, 2019. Have we had a chance to look at those? Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for January 17th, 2019, as presented.
Excuse me. There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Okay, let's take up possible action, the agenda, many changes to the agenda. I know we've got some on a consent agenda, but any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Board members? Public? I don't see any. So unless, without objection, we'll take the agenda as published, and when we get to the consent agenda, we were going to be pulling items 11A and 11B. I'll make that announcement when we get on to the consent agenda itself. So, let's all go down and say good things and talk to our employees who do good work, and they've all been working overtime and hard last week or so here, man. Not that they don't work hard all the time. Let's go down there. All right. Ooh! Man, that works. Pimker, you're back there smiling. What are you smiling about?
It was loud, sir.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. I'm going to tell your buddies that you've been smiling too much, so, all right. This is for five years. Jeremy, come on up. It's Posneck. Is that how it's correctly, yeah. Jeremy, you know, we see each other quite a bit, and I know you're, do the property appraisal, you've been with us for five years, you do a wonderful job over there, making sure that, you know, we toe the line on how appraisals were done, and I understand that, you know, this last time when we did the Board of Adjustment, that we had very, we had fewer than we usually do, and I think that's a tribute to you guys doing the appraisal. Well done, and thanks for everything you do, and keep it up, keep it up. All right, here you go. Oh, that's, oh my goodness. Oh, so what do you, everybody see this? Now that's how you, that's how you do things. You see that? Huh? Jeremy? Come here, man. They're going to have to put me in a hospital. That's amazing. All right. I don't have to declare that, Dan? All right. Jeffrey?
Scott?
Jeffrey, come on up. Deputy Sheriff for 15 years, how you doing? You guys been out on the road quite a bit here lately, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. So everything going all right? Getting enough sleep?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Well, you know, got to have you guys rested because, you know, it's always one thing after another in our world, but on behalf of a grateful community, Jeff, we want to say thank you for everything that you do for us. We all, we understand, you know, that you wear the uniform and, you know, you folks, you know, who wear the uniform and it's all of, you know, everybody who does that, you know, you see a different part of Carson City than, than we do sometimes up here in the board, and it's never lost on me that every time you go out on a call, you really don't know what you're going to run into. And, you know, our crown rate in Carson City, according to the sheriff, is the lowest it's been in 24 years. That speaks highly of you folks in the, in the uniform today. So Jeffrey, on behalf of a grateful community, thank you for everything that you do. We look forward to 20 or 30 more years.
Hope so.
All right, all right. Come on up here. Do you have, do you have any chocolate? All right. All right. Oh, 20 years. Oh, boy, she, this person keeps us on the straight and narrow all the time, and, you know, the, I think, Kath, come on up, Kathy, come on. Kathy King, she's the Chief Deputy Clerk, 20 years you've been here doing, have you been deputy clerk all those years?
Deputy clerk, not a chief.
Okay, all right. So you've been a deputy clerk, but, you know, you and I, and I think we all know that, you know, that a large part of, of what we do in these board meetings, you know, has to be recorded, and when I was first mayor, you know, we had difficulty with, you know, because we had a lot of things going on about getting our agendas, I mean, our minutes done. I got to tell you, you know, your minutes are done on time and timely, well done, very few, even, you know, some, some typographical errors or something like that is understandable, but want to say thank you for making sure that we toe the line on, on getting the minutes done in a timely fashion according to law. Kathleen, you know, we couldn't be here doing all these things without you. So, on behalf of a grateful board, your community, and all of us here, thanks for 20 years of service, and, you know, we're terribly proud of you and thankful that you're here to help us out, and I know you're on, you are doing stuff all the time. I mean, you're always putting stuff in my box down there to sign. You know, I wonder where all this stuff comes from. Anyway, okay, on behalf of all of us, Kathy, here, take, it's a certificate, but let me know, let us, you should know that, you know, in our heart, we think even more of you than what's on that certificate. Okay? And you make sure you say hello to your mom and dad. All right. Did you bring any? All right, all right. Now what are we doing? Oh, now we need a picture, okay.
Did you see that?
I did. Oh. You were pretty taken.
This is for board.
So if we have any family members, coworkers, anyone who would like to come up and get into the picture to support their family, come on up now.
Thank you.
All right. We got an IT guy doing the camera, I don't know.
I'm wearing all hats today, Mr. Mayor.
Should we all do that?
Rachel said just point and shoot.
And they'll look to make sure one of you is wearing a hat. Thank you.
All right. All right, we're ready. We'll now take up the consent agenda, and we're going to pull items 11A and 11B from the consent agenda. Any other items to be pulled? Any members of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? I don't see any. We'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda with, taking out 11A and B.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of one item from the city manager, one item from finance, one item from purchasing and contracts.
There's a motion and a second on a motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Okay. Now let's take up, items pulled from the consent agenda, let's take up 11A. This is to dedicate and accept dedication of right-of-way on Airport Road, APN 010037-03, also known as Budai Way. Stephanie, how are you this morning?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good, how are you?
Good.
For the record, Stephanie Hicks, real property manager. So before you this morning, the item in regards to the dedication of right-of-way for Airport Road and Budai Way is really a cleanup effort to align our right-of-way with where the actual roadway and slope and drainage improvements are, and so there are several parcels that are city-owned parcels, and so portions of those we're proposing to dedicate as right-of-way from the city to the city. So ownership doesn't change, it just changes it from real property to right-of-way. We do have, I'm sorry, I should add, we had a couple pieces of, a couple changes on the dedication document as late material. Following the to and from lines, we added grantor and grantee, and then we also carried that through the dedication document so that it clarified and reflected it accurately.
I understand that there's, people have been talking to you about it, so, everybody okay with those changes, that we need to make more changes? Everybody okay? All right, we'll take a motion to approve 11A.
I move to dedicate and accept, excuse me, I move to dedicate and accept the dedications of right-of-way as described in the document labeled late material handed out this morning for item 11A for Airport Road and Budai Way.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Pose nay, carried. Okay. Let's take up 11B.
My grant, this is messed up here.
You want to?
You got it, thank you.
Got it, okay. 11B. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, real property manager. So similarly, this is another parcel that is owned as real property by the city. If you recall, it was dedicated to the city in August, or pardon me, it was relinquished to the city in August from NDOT, and it was kind of a remnant parcel with other relinquishments that just got left out of the mix, and so the relinquishment went through, now we are likewise dedicating it as right-of-way and just changing it from real property to right-of-way so that it reflects currently in our asset management. We also made those same changes to the dedication document, so in the from and to, we added grantor and grantee, and we also reflected those changes through the rest of the dedication document as well.
Brad, anybody, we made the appropriate changes for everybody? Okay. Public comment on this one, anybody? I don't see any, so are we ready for a motion on this one?
I move to dedicate and accept the dedication of right-of-way on the document labeled late material for item 11B handed out this morning for APN 010-116-01, also known as a portion of Sierra Vista Lane.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Okay. Stephanie, I got to ask you a question. I know I'm retired, I haven't been doing much law lately. A right-of-way is real property?
For purpose, well, it is different, and there-
It's an interest in real property.
The reason why, the reason why it is different is that while the city may have public lands that is real property, that doesn't necessarily give the public the ability to traverse through it or drive across it or drive over it, and so by designating it as right-of-way, it does have a little different of a designation, and it, and it allows the public to do just that. It also allows for us to have franchise agreements with utilities. They can't just go in and put their utilities across our regular real property, but within the right-of-way, they can do that. So it holds a little different.
Thanks for the continuing education. Well done.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right. Where are we, Dan? On that one?
14.
14, right? Let's go, item 14. This is possible approval of the interlocal agreement for operational support between the Carson City Sheriff's Office and University of Nevada. Jerome, are you doing this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you got your trusted assistant from WNC, or from, actually from the college there with you, right?
Absolutely.
All right.
Todd Renwick.
Hi, Conrad.
Good morning.
Was it Conrad, is that, did I get that right?
Todd Renwick.
Todd, okay. Now I can't hear. All right, all right. You want to tell us what's going on?
Well, absolutely, sir. So my name is Jerome Tashman, I'm the Assistant Sheriff here in Carson City. The University of Nevada Police Services will begin staffing full-time officers at the Western Nevada College in cooperation with and under the operational umbrella of the Carson City Sheriff's Office. What we're hoping to have happen is this relationship has already begun informally, and we're putting things together, they're hoping to be staffed up and ready to go mid-year, on or about July 1st, 2019.
Todd, anything?
Todd Renwick, for the record, that is correct. We're excited to be part of this community, we're excited to be partners with the college here, and we're just trying to formalize how that's going to look.
Good, all right. Questions to the board? Anybody? Public comment? It's a good move. This is good, I mean, you know, yeah, it's just, it's the right thing to do, and, as I think I talked to, we were talking to Ken Sandage before, you know, that it saves us some, some uniform time up there because they're going to be taking some of that over, so, good stuff. All right. Are we ready for a motion? Motion's in order, Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Okay, let's take up 15. This is, 15 Alpha for billing services for Carson City Health and Human Services. It's an award of a contractor, potential award of a contractor, Stat Medical Consulting, Inc. Okay. Who's doing this?
Good morning, Carol Ekers, purchasing and contracts. And, yeah, this is, an RFP was released to bring a billing service, a third-party billing service for Carson City's Health and Human Services, and they're looking to award to Stat Medical Consulting, Inc.
Ronnie, anything to say?
Yeah, so Carson City Health and Human Services received an immunization billing grant in 2013, and this grant allowed us to expand our billing and extend our billing into contract insurances, and, and under this grant, we hired a city position, an in-house biller. But, but over the last couple of years, or actually year, we've been questioning and evaluating the cost-effectiveness of actually having an in-house biller following the ending of a grant and the fact that we're no longer administrating Douglas County, so, because the larger entity that you are, having an in-house biller makes more economic sense, and the smaller you get, having an in-house biller doesn't make economic sense. And so our full-time biller resigned back in September, and so we took that opportunity to evaluate whether we really wanted to refill a full-time position, and in our evaluation of that, we realized that that wasn't an economically smart decision, and so we put out this RFP and pursued a third-party biller, and overall, this change is going to reduce our expenses by about $45,000 for what an in-house biller with salary and benefits, and, and then during flu season, we actually had to hire extra people to enter the billing for the 3,000 extra flu shots, and this company will do all of that within this contract.
Questions on the board? I've got Stacy, go ahead. Supervisor Gyoemi.
Hi. Will, is this company picking up old accounts or only from a point forward?
They will take care of old accounts as well as moving forward.
Right.
Yes.
And on the, on one of the pages, it talks about that they can work with e-clinical, which is, I assume you're EHR, you use e-clinical?
Correct, that's our electronic health record.
It says they can work with your EHR, but does that mean they will? I mean, I guess, so my question is, are we going to have, are you able to stay with e-clinical? That's my question.
Yes, we, we are asking them to do the billing through the current system that we have. We've had e-clinical work since 2006, we have no reason to change it, and they're not, we wouldn't have hired them had they-
But there's not an extra cost.
There's not an extra cost.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ronnie, for, you answered most of my questions in your presentation, but I am curious, when you did an analysis of the in-house billing position, did that include looking at the efficiency of collections from the in-house position versus the billing, the outside billing company?
Yeah, as far as an analysis of that, collections, this company is willing to actually step up collections more than we were able to do, and so in many ways, it's going to, this company will improve what we've been able to do with only one person.
Yeah, that's what I suspected.
Yeah.
All right.
Good morning. So you indicated that you thought there'd be an actual savings. Does that mean that the grant itself will be reduced for billing services, or what are you going to do with the excess dollars? What does that get us?
Yeah, most of what this is going to, so, a few of our grants, the Title X Family Planning Grant, and then our Vaccines for Children's Program, it's not really a grant, but basically the federal government gives us free vaccines. Both of those programs require that the program income that we receive from these programs go back into the actual programs, family planning, vaccinations, and so this isn't actually coming out of a grant, this will come out of that program income, and yes, then there potentially will be a savings in that program income, but we're required to put it back into the program, so then we will make decisions about, you know, where would be the best use of that in the, in the program.
So, so we're just, we're able to provide more services within the required area?
Correct, potentially, yes.
That's what I was after.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other board comments or questions? Public comments? Let me, let me just make one observation. It has not much to do with this agenda item, but it has to do with you, Ronnie. You know, I'll just preface it like this, Allison Joffe won, bought a, a free dinner from, from the mayor at one of our charity events, and we had that dinner about two weeks ago, and Allison brought Ronnie to the dinner, we were at Dells, and I would, just wanted to say that, you know, had some quiet time with Ronnie, she has quite a background, and, you know, we're fortunate to have somebody of her talent and credibility here, and, you know, the, kind of the icing, the cream on the crop, or the icing on, whatever that phrase is, they left early from that dinner to go to the Episcopal Church to open it up for the homeless shelters, both Allison and Ronnie did. That's what people do in our community. I mean, you know, they could have stayed there and spent a lot more of my money, but they went, but they went and opened up the church, and that, that's a good thing, and so hats off to you guys.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my 10 years up is in July, is there a chocolate that's your favorite other than Hershey's?
Well, there would, there would be, but I already, nah, never mind. All right, all right. We're ready, board?
Thank you.
Ready for a motion? Somebody want to do it?
Yeah, I got it. I move to approve the award of contract number 1819-127.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Okay. Let's now take up the staff, the assumptions we'd like the staff to use in putting together the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Where's Sherri? There you are. I didn't see over there.
Right here, Mayor.
You're stuck around over there, all right.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to hear a lot from me this morning, I definitely apologize for that, but, so, this item is to present the discussion and possible direction regarding assumptions staff will use to prepare the city's fiscal year 2020 budget. The main item is setting the fiscal year 2020 property tax rate. So first, I have a lovely graph here for you. This shows the assessed valuation is the green bars, and the orange or red-looking line at the top shows the property tax revenue. It's a 10-year graph showing how we're doing, basically, and it's going up, so, so that's always a good sign. The property tax rate in Nevada is a little challenging, so for the public and everybody, I wanted to take a few minutes to, to explain it. I think we do this every year, but bear with me for a moment. NRS 361 includes the tax cap on rental, residential properties of 3% and commercial properties of 8%. That's the initial cap, but it's a two-step process. So in addition to that, we have to look at the percent change in CPI, as well as the 10-year average change in assessed valuation. The 10-year average change in assessed valuation was again negative, it has been, it probably will be for several more years, and the, the CPI was 2.43%. The calculation is to double that to get our cap, which is 4.86% for 2020. So we can, with this calculation, go to the full cap of 3% for residential, but commercial will be capped at 4.86, so we can't get the full 8% for that. Projections indicate property taxes revenues will go up by 4% in fiscal year 2020 is what I have in there right now, and that's leaving the property tax rate at 3.57%. If we increased it by 2 cents, we'd get an extra $47,500, however, we'd abate over $300,000 of that 2 cents, so it basically would increase our abatement. And then I wanted to mention that our total abatement in fiscal 2020, because property taxes are increasing, is $6.6 million. I do have an example here, a quick example of the tax calculation. So if we have a new build in 2018, the residential taxable value would be 250,000, just as an estimate, or as a, you know, hypothetical situation, and then the assessed value of that is 35%, so 87,500. The 3.57 rate, we'd get 3,124, and a new build, we get the whole amount. However, the next year, the tax cap comes into effect, so if we had like a 5% increase in assessed value, and we left the tax rate at 3.57, we could potentially bill 3,280, but the tax cap cuts it at this 3,217, so we have a $62 abatement. And then furthermore, in the third year, the abatement just grows and grows because, again, we can only go 3% over that, that prior year bill, so we can only bill 3,114 when, or the actual rate should be 3,000- So we can only bill 3,114 when, or the actual rate should be 3,460. But because of the cap, we can only bill 3,314. If we were to increase the tax rate all the way to the maximum, it would not matter with this, this hypothetical property. We would still only be able to bill the 3,314 and everything would go to, to abatement. So that's kind of the way our, our property works. I'm sure most of you understand that at this point, but it is complicated, so I just wanted to take a second to go over it. This is what our revenues are looking like for property taxes. So I wanted to point out that fiscal year 17 and 18, the increase was 4.6% overall actual increase. And that year, we only projected a 3.1% increase. And that's new build. I mean, it has to be all new build. Because they do take their time and work very hard on the property that actually exists and what's out there. So fiscal year 19, I have budgeted and estimated. And the difference there is what we budgeted at this time of year versus what we actually billed in July. So any new property coming on, and that's estimated to be an additional 327,000 for fiscal year 19. And then 20, that's that 4% increase is about a million dollars on top of that. To go on to C-TAC, oh, yeah, please stop me if you have any questions.
I assume that 4% is a rather conservative estimate?
It is. So next, I'm going to move on to consolidated taxes. In the past, we've always estimated 4%. Well, for the last several years, as the economy's gone up, we've, we've budgeted 4% and we've exceeded it by, by vast amounts. However, everybody this year seems to be talking about a slowdown in the economy. Not, not a recession, I don't want anybody to get worried, but a, but a definite slowdown. So we just want to be prepared for the worst, but hope for the best. So we're, we're looking at a 2.5 increase in, in 2020 in property taxes. And for 19, at this point, I sent you guys, the last one I sent you, I believe it was 9.5% was the increase so far this year, but we, we projected 2.5 for the rest of the year. And so, at the end of this year, we, we're looking at 6.6% is what we're budgeting through the rest of 19. And then 2.5% for, for 20. Now, I hope that comes in more, but if it doesn't, we could put ourselves in trouble. So I'm just trying to be conservative and at the direction of some of you guys, I understand that you're in favor of that. Again, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. This next slide is what we're looking at.
Yes, of course. So, I'm really interested in the 2.5% growth factor. What, what has been our average growth over the last 10 years?
Over the, I didn't.
I'm just trying to get an idea of why 2.5, not 3 or, you know. I agree with going conservative, but I don't want to go so conservative that we can't get some of our capital needs met. So it's a trade-off, right? Because the more conservative we are, the less we can get done that we may need to get accomplished. So I want to, I'm probably the most conservative here, so, but I, I don't want to ratchet it down so far that we can't get some accomplished needs.
Yeah, and I, and I completely understand that. My thought was, my initial, my initial impact or thought was to put it at 2%. To be quite honest, because if it's flat, I mean, it's very high right now, it's 32 million, which we've never seen. So if it doesn't come in, if it's flat, we're going to have to drop 2.5% from our budget right now, which is really hard, you know, to take money away, it's much harder than to add it later. So I'm doing it this way, so that if, if money does come in for 19, we can do that first round of augmentations and add money to the budget and then get those capital needs later. But I'd rather be more conservative upfront than put too much money in and then have to tell the directors, wait, 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 you can't spend that. So that, that was my thought process. I did not do a 10-year average because obviously the recession, we're going to be huge negatives and then we slowly climbed out of it. So it probably would be around 2 or 3%.
Yeah, and I, and I think some of this is based on conversations that I've had with Sherry as well, where I'm projecting out that the property tax will rise, but C-TACs could very well be flat next year. So you're trying to balance those two to see, you know, what our increase in revenue's going to be. And I do think that we're going to see C-TACs go flat over the next couple of years. Property tax will continue to increase. You know, so I'd rather err on the side of being cautious than start drawing down ending fund balance to make up the difference, because I'd like to keep increasing our goal for our reserves. So I think that, that might be part of it. And then, just to go back to your hypothetical taxable value example, it's actually not even as pretty as what you're making it out to be here, is because you didn't factor in the depreciation in years two and three. So it'd actually generate less revenue and there'd be more going in or less going into the same percentage, but we wouldn't even generate. So you said, if we went to the maximum rate, it'd be 47,000. Once you factor in depreciation, that's not going to be the case, it's going to be less than that even. So it doesn't really make any difference.
Right.
Any other questions of Sherry on this particular one? Then, you want to continue on?
Yeah, I'm going to, the next slide's the capital of the city and what we're looking at doing for 2020. So this is, again, very preliminary estimates. I haven't gotten all my five-year salaries done yet, but, but this is very preliminary projections, but I think we can safely follow this. We're looking at a recommended capital of $6 million for 2020 and a million dollars in operating. That is more than the other years. I, I figure that question's coming, so I'm just going to answer it. And it's because there's a lot of IT needs now that we've put in all these new systems, the new ERP system. There's going to be a lot of services and supplies, contract maintenance that aren't currently in, in there. So I, I'm expecting a bunch of supplementals to come through for that. So in addition to that, you know, there'll be other needs and so that is a million. But as you can see, we, I'm looking at right now an ending fund balance of 8.66 doing this. And for that recommended capital number, that is strictly what we're sending to 210, extraordinary maintenance, and that does include the 5-cent capital transfer from the general fund. It does not include the, what we decided to transfer for landfill, because that's just automatic over there at this point. So as you can see, even in 2024, the, the 5% was, I think, 775,000. So we're still getting that 5% over to general fund. And please keep in mind that for the five-year projection, we project salaries as if nobody leaves and, you know, raises just keep going. It's very conservative. So the way that we project everything, we project revenues, you know, pretty low and then, and then expenses as they are today with raises every year, nobody leaves, it And then I'll real quickly go over our, our plan of attack for each month. So in February, we sent the CIP requests out on the fir, on the, or I'm sorry, the CIP requests were due back to us on the first. The base budget projections, we got out last Friday to all the departments. We're here today talking about cost allocation and all the proj, all the assumptions. And then we're meeting next week on the 28th to go over the CIP and get together as a management team and discuss recommendations for you guys. I'm expecting to, on the 8th, get the information back from the departments so that we can start putting together the budget as a whole. And then on the 20th, we're going to get together for interim finance committee, maybe the 27th, but hopefully the 20th, to talk about supplemental requests and kind of organize and categorize those for you guys, get a recommendation together. I'm hoping to be able to bring that all back to you by the 4th. We are having a budget open house on the 1st, like we always, we always do. And if we do, if we are able to get that all together and back to you by the 4th, then we'll put all those CIP and supplemental requests into the final budget by the 9th. The tentative budget is due on the 15th, so we'll get that out. That can always be changed, so in most cases, we don't end up getting it to you at that first meeting in April. We try really hard, but there always seems to be a few things, so we end up getting it to you at that meeting on the 18th. And it's worked out most years if we do get it to you to that meeting. So if we have to, we'll move it to that meeting. And then we would put the approved items in after that meeting. In May, we'll do the advertisement on Monday, the 6th, and then the, we'll have to have a special board meeting on the 20th. The NRS says we have to do it 10 business days before the end of May. So if our meeting falls in between those dates, we can do it. And it, I think it has only happened once since I've been here. We, other than that, we've had to have special meetings. So unfortunately, this time, we're going to have to have a special meeting on May 20th because the 16th is too early. And then the budget's due on June 1st. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Sherry, did you happen to do the calculations to see what the impact would be if we lowered the property tax rate by 1 or 2 cents?
I did not. Based on the discussions last year, it seemed like a, like a future, what you, it seemed like you wanted to keep that rate at least at where it is for a few years to get the benefits of it. So I did not.
I'd be interested if you could do that and send it to me.
Sure.
I'd like to see that. Or it looks like, looks like maybe if you could send it out to the whole board.
Sure.
Your recommendation?
Oh, our recommendation is to leave it at 3.57.
Public comment on this issue? Anybody want to weigh in? Board? We okay?
Yes, and have just general discussion.
Discussion's over.
I think because you're being so conservative, I think in both issues, in the property tax, because I think there's a lot of building going to come online based on the permits that were drawn. So I think you're being conservative there and conservative in the consolidated tax. I really don't want to lower the property tax, because now we're going to really start eliminating our need or our ability to do capital. And it sounds great to say I'll augment the budgets later, but as we've seen, everything we do in capital, it takes months to execute capital expenditures. So you almost get through half of a fiscal year or three-quarters of a fiscal year before they even can get bids in and RFPs and all the other thing that's necessary to do capital. So I hate to go conservative and reduce the rate too, so I'm comfortable with 3.50, 3.57.
I don't know who's next. John? Then go back to Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, not going to weigh in much on this, but I've already said this many times before, I'll repeat myself. First of all, although I will say that I don't think that I necessarily agree with Brad, but we're all just projecting what we think might happen. Truth of the matter is, I think this will be a fairly good year. The C-TACs will go down some, but it won't turn flat. And I agree with Lori that property tax should stay the same, although that probably means that the most conservative and the most liberal person up here agree, but not branding myself as a liberal, I'll change that to progressive. At any rate, it, it's all a guess. My concern is that if it turns out that we're wrong and we increase or keep the, the reserve as high as we do, have a rainy day fund as well, we're being extra conservative. And I have no, no problem in being conservative financially. As a matter of fact, I am conservative financially, fiscally. I'm just liberal in the other sense or the progressive in the other sense. But if, if we continue to sit on the money because we're worried about another recession and we go through any inflationary period, we're going to be hoarding money that becomes less valuable. So I tend to agree with Lori, it'd be nicer if we moved a little higher in the sense that we could use that money on things. I'll give a couple of examples. As you all know, I'm an advocate of fixing roads and we may have a problem with potholes after this winter. I'm also very concerned about the situation in our downtown and I don't think our NID is doing the job of making it either the snow removal or the cleanup. I, as well, I'm concerned about the fact that as far as I can see, we have an ordinance requiring our citizens to do their sidewalks and the city doesn't do its own sidewalks near parks, et cetera. There's just, there are just some small things that make the difference between this being the kind of community we want to live in and the kind of community that other people might want to come visit and the other way around. So I'm going to agree with Lori, although I don't always agree with her on some things, on this one I am. I'd like to see a little more money go for things that people need. I understand what you said about IT, but again, I made the point under the last city manager, we spend money for the roads that are our pipes more than we spend money for the roads that are the ones we drive on. Thank you.
This is the part where I get to disagree with you both. I don't disagree with you both, I actually do agree with both of you, but I, I don't think you can be too conservative. I think in, in my, from my perspective, the only thing you're doing is possibly delaying capital expenditures by a year and then you're working with real money rather than estimated money, which I have no problem with. I always like to know where I'm actually at instead of where I'm projecting I'm going to be at. So in the first three years that I was on the board, I was able to convince them to lower the property tax rate. And I think anytime we have an opportunity to do that, that it's inherent upon us to actually do that, I think we owe that to the citizens. So I would like to see those numbers, just to see what the impact is. I think that gives us more cushion in the future if we do get into another recession, notwithstanding the tax cap rate, which throws a monkey wrench into that. But I'm, I'm a real advocate for being ultra-conservative and then dealing with real money.
So my two cents is I've, I've sat on the other side. I, I understand Sherry's position. It is extremely difficult when you're a department director to get a budget that has a quantity of money and then two months in, get told that all of a sudden you have to cut 2 or 2.5% because you build work programs on those funds. So I, I agree with the number, I trust Sherry's judgment, I, I would not be in favor of increasing that amount of money. And to John's point, yeah, money is always, I mean, buying things now is always going to be cheaper than buying things in the future. But at the same time, having lived through, like some of this board did and a lot of the people in the audience did, having to cut to the bone, literally, I'm, I'm really an advocate for us having money set aside for when that inevitable downturn comes, because we know it's going to happen. And this city did an amazing job of continuing a high level of service through some really tough economic times. In my opinion, we did the best of just about anybody in the state of Nevada. And it's because of the previous board's conservative nature and setting money aside for those rainy days when things may happen that it's important. So I, I agree with Brad. Let's be, let's be realistic about it. Let's try and spend the money when we can, to John's point, and buy things now when it's cheaper, but we can't ignore setting money aside for the future. In fact, I'd, I'd like to see that ending fund balance creep up. So that's where I'm coming from.
So just, I'm sorry, I need to say one more thing. So the property tax rate is due to taxation tomorrow. I'm very sorry. We seem to always do this to you guys last minute. The, the assessed value is going at 5.5%. So if we did drop the tax rate, I seriously doubt it would have much effect on our revenue. However, in the future, if we do have a downturn, it's very hard to get those extra dollars and increase the tax rate, as you can see, because we just don't get it. The tax cap's there and we just don't get the monies. So it's, it's better almost to increase 3% each year and just leave it status quo. But I will still do that calculation for you and get it done for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually, it's really amazing, if politics worked this way on the national level, we'd all be a lot better off, because we don't really disagree as much up here as it sounds like, perhaps from what we're seeing. I, I don't disagree with either of Stacy or Brad, as he said, he didn't disagree with Lori and I that much. As he said, he didn't disagree with Lori and I that much. I'm just concerned, and part of the reason that it boils down, and this is what Brad said, the problem is that you'd rather deal with real money rather than projected money, but we can't do that. We set this tax and we're going to set it, and we're probably going to set it at the amount rather than lower. We could lower it later, but then we do our budget afterwards. And so it's trying to, it's like trying to put a squirrel plague in a round hole. You're trying to figure out, A, what's going on in the future revenue-wise and what's going on in the future outgo-wise, spending-wise. But I have certain needs, and I think everybody up here has certain needs, they might not always dovetail, that need we would like to see get done in this city. And so I'm going to keep harping on what I'd like to see done, and we'll see if the money comes in at a higher amount. I'm just worried about the tendency always to squirrel it away and build it up too much when I actually, again, we're in Never Neverland here, think we're going to have a little better time over the next couple of years than other people do. But I could easily be wrong. So what I think doesn't much matter.
Well, I think it does matter. I think it does matter. Personally, I, personally, I think it does matter. You know, what I was going to say is, is that, you know, I tend to agree with what Supervisor Geomie said. I mean, I've been through it where, you know, making the painful cuts where we didn't have any, you know, we blew through rainy day fund, blew through everything else, took 10 million out of the, out of the general fund. So for me, I think that, you know, I'd just as soon leave the tax rate the way it is and squirrel away what we can right now. I think because, that's just my sense, because I'd hate to go through again what we did eight years ago. All right. Any other comments?
So you're like a squirrel getting ready for winter. Oh, burn's here, excuse me.
Right.
Mayor, can I just add a couple things?
Sure.
So I just wanted to let you know, the vote on the rate today does not lock in that rate. We still have until the budgets do. And then, oh, that's the slide I wanted Sherry to be on. So if you look right now with those conservative projections, we're still estimating that we could spend 6 million in capital. And if you look out in those future years, in the five-year projection, those capital numbers are pretty small. So if the revenues do come in higher, that would just, you know, we'd be able to increase those, the capital spending in the, you know, future years to be more consistent, you know, year after year. I just wanted to add that.
Cool.
Sherry, what does it do to the ending fund balance if you cut half a million from capital?
In the current year?
Mm-hmm.
It increases it to about 9% at the very end.
At the very end, meaning?
So 2024, if I kept everything the same but cut a half million from 2020. I mean, it would increase the fund balance across the board, but I was most concerned with the 2024 fund balance because that needed to be above 8.3%.
Right, right.
But I still wanted to be able to transfer the 5% from general fund to capital.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments before we take public testimony? Public testimony, anybody want to weigh in? Anybody? Can you hear me now? That's a terrible thing to say, but.
I barely hear you. The gentleman, Brad, I cannot hear you at all. And I'm sorry, I don't hear well anyway.
Well, that's what, I mean.
It's hard to keep up on catching parts of the conversation, and these are up so high, I speed back.
Well, I, not that we want to get into talking about hearing aids, but sometimes the hearing aids make you, you know, your voice goes a little lower. I mean, so, I mean, it sounds loud to me, but it's low to you. So don't, you know, just raise your hand if we need to speak louder. Don't worry about that. I know what your concern is. And if there's anything you want us to go back and talk about, we would do that right now.
No, because actually I'm here for two other reasons.
All right, all right.
Can I make a suggestion from a couple of old broadcasters at each end of this thing? If you eat the mic, it'll do better.
I, I agree with that, but I, somehow I understood that these new fancy mics would automatically pick up and adjust your, to your voice level wherever you were with that mic, so.
I think that's not going to happen.
Well, it may not be happening. I don't know, but that's what I thought, so. But we will do our level best to make sure that everybody hears everything we're doing, so. Okay, all right. Any other public comment? Anybody? All right, board, what do you want to do? Lori?
I moved to direct staff to use $3.57 as the property tax rate in preparing the FY 1920 Carson City budget.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion? Discussion's in order.
And Sherry, you know, the other thing that I'd like to see an analysis on is if, instead of lowering the tax rate, if we took one penny of the tax rate and added it to the five cents, we took five cents to six cents, and then maybe two years out to add another penny. Because I want to see, obviously, we're going to have a dilemma coming up with the asset management program and trying to fund it based on a reserve study. And so if we could, I'd like to see what the impact is if we were to implement a program where we started transferring that, some excess revenue over to that in anticipation of needing those funds there. And it may be that it doesn't generate any money and it's a pointless endeavor, but I'd like to see that.
Well, it'll just decrease what we can spend in 2020.
I get that.
Yeah, okay, because in 2024, that problem was getting that up to 875.
Couldn't even make that.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I mean, okay. I can do something for you.
And Sherry, before we vote, are there, are there bills out there that would address the issue of the caps between residential and commercial or would otherwise affect?
I haven't seen any yet. I'm getting the financial impacts and I haven't seen any yet. So I know there's some out there for gas tax, for diesel tax, but I haven't seen any yet on the property tax. Have you, Nancy?
I've seen something come through on property tax, but I haven't read it yet.
That was, I think, transfer tax down in Clark County to fund affordable housing.
Okay, all right.
Just on discussion.
Discussion's in order.
So as we're building these budgets and working on that, I'm certainly in favor of what, where Brad's trying to go. We've been working on asset management and funding our long-term needs. We don't necessarily have to do it with tax rate transfer. We could be looking at each month in fiscal 19, as the real dollars are coming in higher, maybe we want to address taking a percentage of those dollars and putting it to the asset management program. So just to kind of help with staff knowing a direction we're trying to go, what things we're trying to address for the future goals. So we may be able to stay conservative here, yet know where we want to go if it does, performs better than anticipated, that we know we want to be funding our asset management.
Yeah, and I did look at the next time we'd be able to bond, and it looks like in 2022, our C-tax debt goes pretty significantly down. We'd have about a little over 700,000 that we could look at bonding to maybe do a short-term capital asset improvement bond or something.
Would you speak up?
Yes, so in 2022, we have a significant drop in our debt service for the C-tax bonds. So the amount that comes out of general fund and is transferred to debt service. So we could potentially use that for capital improvements for the city.
Well, that's well and good. Can I go, Mayor?
Sure, cool, let's go.
Thank you. That's well and good, but depending on what the voters do, should I run again? I don't be, I'll be out there citizening and that rather than doing this and holding the biggest office in the land, which is a citizen. But the truth of the matter is, I want to put Brad on notice that I don't disagree with what he's trying to do in terms of that one cent or whatever it might turn out to be. But again, we either need to find money for roads somewhere else before then, or I can't support it, or it needs to go into roads. I am at the point where we got a little money from roads from the VNT, extra reserve, but we still have, you know, a huge thing in front of us. We both agree on that. It's so huge that you can't do it with anything that we can talk about here, but we need to find that money. And so I can support it if we're finding that money. And you're, you two are on RTC, I hope you can find it for us.
Yeah, no pressure.
You know, my, my, my personal sense is, my personal sense is that, you know, the roads are, roads are definitely an issue, but, you know, I don't think it's prudent for us to keep rating the general fund to do that. I think that roads, that the nexus between roads and the revenue that it gets is in gas tax right now or diesel tax. And frankly, I think that, you know, that's, we're either going to live with that or we got to find some other revenue stream. I mean, because I think that we're not doing ourselves any favors on, on continuing to eat into, into, in my view, eat into the general fund. So particularly when there is a dedicated, there has been historically a dedicated revenue stream for roads that didn't rely on a general fund. So John, if you want to disagree with that, shoot at it.
Well, I, I agree with you on the nexus part, but I, I drive over the potholes, so it's, it's a matter of where, where you go and when you get there. We're going to keep driving in this country for a long time to come, no matter whether they're electric cars or whatever. And you're right, we're going to find a way to do it revenue-wise, that if possible, is a nexus. But the people who drive in roads don't care if we have the pipes or the thing that's supposed to pick up our voice here, but doesn't. But they do care about their shock absorbers and their rear ends.
Go.
Well, John, I guess I just have to say that the citizens of Carson City had an opportunity to come up with some money for roads, and they turned it down.
Agreed. I don't subscribe, though, to the idea that, A, the 40-some percent who voted on the, on the minority side of that still don't deserve consideration, and I don't buy into the fact that everybody who voted against it, voted against it because of the gas tax increase. Some of them may have voted against it because they didn't think we fixed the roads very well, or whatever their reasons were. But the point of matter is, is just because they voted against it doesn't mean they don't deserve better roads.
Okay, well, I don't think we're going to solve the road issue right here. We have a motion for to set the tax rate at $3.57. Further discussion on that motion? Anybody? Okay, on the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
O, nay, carried. Okay, thank you. All right, let's now move on to the deletion, item 16 Bravo. This is to take possible action concerning the deletion of capital assets from the city's capital asset listing for fiscal year 2018 by the Finance Department. Ms. Russell, you want to tell us what we're doing? We do this kind of annually as well.
We do.
What are you giving up?
We do this annually. It's actually for the fiscal year 18, so these items have already gone to auction and been deleted and been audited. So it looks like we are, part of it is the sewer plant that we re-did, so they're decommissioned some of the equipment buildings there. So the governmental fund capital asset, the book value we're deleting would be 196, 449. The proceeds from that were 32,978, so we had a loss of 163, 471. And for the business type, we had a book value of 63, 720. We only received 7,007,90, and we had a net loss of 55, 930. We do tend to keep our assets a very, 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 very long time. Yes, so we rarely have, you can see on the list, or I guess you can't see my slides, very, very small, but in the packet, you can see that most of the book values are zero. So.
And you may not know the answer and have to get back to me. I'm sorry I didn't get you the question in advance too to look up, but I just happened to spot asset 3474, the brush, how do you have a negative book value? You have more accumulated depreciation than cost.
This is our wonderful 30-year-old system. We actually called HTE on this during the audit because this was, I mean, the system should never do this, but it over-depreciated by $2,000. We looked at everything, the auditors questioned it. It was the only asset this happened to, and HTE could not respond as to why this happened. But it over-depreciated on us. And we do actually check the journal entry to try to make sure we, we catch this, but a lot of the assets are commingled in the journal entry, they're added together. So it's, it's hard to, it's hard to spot that one little one that over-depreciated.
I guess I don't understand that. Aren't you getting a pronoun that's item by item?
Yes, there's a complete list. It's 200 pages long. So we leaf through it and try to see if anything looks weird, but we missed, we missed it.
Okay. All right, just, all right, you'll, you'll be careful in the future to look for the glitch, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, glitch, okay, thank you.
I don't want to add to this, being philosophical as I am often, but I can't help but recall we were here, or almost all of us recently for the new Bob Baldrick Theater, which is wonderful, you can now sit in the seats. And seats cost, cost a great deal. But we used those seats that were original equipment for 44 years. And if you, if you took that little item and, and did that calculation, you'd find it was at a negative, negative. And again, my rear end knows it because I have problems with it when I'm driving a car or when I'm sitting in a seat. But the point, the point is, we used those seats for a long time. I had somebody come up to me and say, well, they ought to be good for $800 a pop. If they, if they go for another 44 years, that probably will, you know, work out very well. And that's how that happens, as you know, but in a calculation, it doesn't matter. The truth of the matter is, those seats were dead long since, and I'm sure that was too.
Other questions or discussions on this issue? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see any. Okay, somebody want to make a motion on this one?
Yeah, I got it. I moved a lot of the Finance Department to delete capital assets from the city's capital asset listing for fiscal year 2018.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
O, nay, carried. Okay, let's take up the cost allocation plan before we get to the Board of Health.
Last one, I swear, then I'll stop talking.
Yeah. Well, I know that Supervisor Bagwell has gone through every page on this.
She has.
I mean, if anybody's wondering about if we read these things?
We do. Yes, she did a wonderful job reviewing it and taught me on a few things, and so we've got, late material was submitted.
Yeah.
Just to go through this real quickly, as I normally do for public and anybody who is unaware, we have a consultant come out and help us with this cost allocation plan. The first top section of this plan, probably right until about here, is done by our consultant. So she comes out and based on what the department does, she'll spread the costs via labor, via transaction. However, it works out for that department. And so she does her calculation to spread the dollars over the whole city, every department in the city. And then that is actual 18 numbers that those are based on. And then we move those numbers forward to use it in the 2020 budget. So we first take out Public Works because they're a huge department, they focus on different things every year. So they do a 2020 calculation separately from, from using the old numbers, what happened in 2018. We then take that amount and add 6% to it. Those are for salary increases, a little bit of termination savings, merit increases. That 6% bringing us from 18 to 19 to 20, the budget we're using, so it's two years, has been working really well for us. And then there's a few adjustments in here. There's one adjustment to CFR 2 Plan. It's basically a grant-type adjustment we use for the voter-approved funds. And then we've got the, where we add back Public Works, their actual projection for 2020. There's some fire training, and then the true-up. The true-up is the true-up of the Public Works calculation, and that's in the gray down at the bottom here. So that takes above, it takes Marcel, our consultant's numbers from above and compares them to what Public Works projected two years ago. And then it spits out what the difference is. And that difference is the true-up up here. And we've been doing this true-up for about three years now, I think, and every year, they never estimate quite enough. We never give money back to the general fund. It's always a little more. So at the end of the day, we've got the 19 and 20 amount budgeted, the actual the, the actual cost allocation for each fund. And that, that's how it's calculated. If you have any questions, we try to keep it as similar year after year.
Do you wanna give a little, just a thumbnail description of what a cost allocation study is designed to do?
Absolutely. So the general fund does a lot of work. We've got a treasurer, we got finance, me, the DA's office, IT. We work for the entire city. So there's a lot of special revenue funds and enterprise funds that get benefits from the general fund. And so it's, it's designed to pay back the general fund for those services. Because if the ambulance, the sewer fund, any of the special revenue funds, if they had to operate independently, they would have to hire an HR person, a finance person. They'd have to hire somebody to do all of these jobs internally. And so they're getting those benefits, so this is charging them for the general fund services.
All right. Other questions or Sherry on this one? Go.
I just wanna really comment for the public and, and thank you, Sherry, for the adjustments and for footnoting and helping to bring clarity to the process. Not that a lot of people understand the finite little numbers running around, but thank you. And I really wanted to bring to light the senior citizens center that we're now going to do the same thing that we do with Quality of Life. So that's a slight change, I didn't wanna gloss over that from what we've done in the past, that all voter override tax rates that the voters did, we're gonna apply the two-hundred CFR rules to that. So the senior center will be treated the same way as the question eighteen, 'cause both of those were voter overrides for specific services. So it didn't save them a lot, but seventy-eight hundred dollars is, helps meals on wheels or things, other activities. So I'm really pleased, that's a change I wanted to recommend and would appreciate everyone supporting that. And thanks for the updates.
Okay. Other questions or comments? All right, Sue Pfizer-Bagwell, you wanna make a motion?
I move to accept the Carson City Cost Allocation Plan as presented as late material for the fiscal year ended June thirty, 2018, for use in preparing the fiscal year 2020 Carson City budget.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion, further discussion? Don't see any. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, nay, carried. Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as promised, I will be quiet now.
Yeah, it's all right. Just don't breathe fire at us, that's okay. All right. All right. We're gonna be, we're gonna take a recess here, and we're gonna, so we'll be in recess for, call it ten minutes. Let the Board of Health get set up here, everybody go. So let's take a break until five to, five to ten. Okay? All right. We'll be in recess.
Welcome to the first Board of Health meeting today on February 21. I would ask that we call the rule.
Member Furlong.
He's excused.
Member Giomi.
Here.
Member Bonkowski.
Here.
Member Bagwell.
Here.
Member Barrett.
Here.
Vice Chair Crowell.
Here.
And Chair Pintar.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I will ask initially, item 19, any public comment to be heard. All right, we'll go on to item 20, approval of the minutes of November 1, 2018. Any comments?
Make a motion. I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Health for November 1, 2018, with the correction to the members shown present, deleting Member Furlong, adding Member Bonkowski.
All in favor? Well, let's see, negative? I don't think you can vote, Stace, you weren't there.
I actually can vote.
Mostly.
You can.
I can vote.
He can vote?
He can vote.
To approve minutes?
Yep, you can legally vote, you can do it.
Cool.
I had a lawyer's tongue, it was true, so.
Yeah, you can do it. Some people don't, but he can do it.
Yeah, he was here just in the house.
Never mind. How does this thing work? I can't tell. When it's green, it's on?
It's green.
Green, go.
How do you turn it off?
Push the button.
Okay, never mind.
All right, sorry. Oh, I guess it's the health officer report. I don't have a whole lot to report today. We're in the middle of flu season, everybody knows that. We're not having a horrible flu season, the East Coast is. I will take credit for Carson City not having a horrible flu season because Ronnie and the Public Health Preparedness Program delivered 5,000 flu shots to our community, of course, in partnership with local pharmacies and local physicians' offices. I think we have a pretty good flu coverage for our community. I did want to mention that there's a measles epidemic starting up in southern Washington, in the Vancouver area, and the Portland, Oregon, which is northern Oregon. There have been a couple of hundred of cases, if I'm remembering correctly. And to remind the public that vaccines for the measles and everything else you could possibly imagine are available at Carson City Health and Human Services. So don't get the measles, it's not a fun one. We are, well, I really don't have much else to say, I'll leave it at that. The mayor mentioned continuing education, and I did want to remind our board that we are going to receive some continuing education today about what we're supposed to be doing, and I think you'll find it very interesting. But most of what I'm going to say today, I'm going to let Nikki fill us in, because there's some interesting legislative updates that you may want to give her direction about. So, let's see, I guess I have to ask for approval of that for report.
I move to accept the health officer's report.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, passes, thank you. We'll go on to item 21B. Nikki, you want to take the stage?
Thank you, Dr. Pintar. Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, for the record. And so I have brought today some public health legislative priorities that we are working on in public health, and this is a collaboration with our agency, the state, Southern Nevada Health District, and Washoe County Health District. And I just need to make a correction, you're not here to make, give me direction on these, since our policy is to go through the city manager as far as our city bills that we can support on that. So, but I wanted to at least let you know what we're working on as a public health agencies, and if constituents out there have any input into these bills, I'll be happy to listen and discuss them. And of course, you know, if the supervisors have anything on, as they're seeing, then we can discuss it later, but I'm not here to take direction today on this. So, one bill is the public health funding, and that is AB 97. What this bill is designed to do is establish a public health improvement fund, and the Division of Public and Behavioral Health at the state will administer that fund. We have asked for a $5 per capita to put into the fund, and that what's equating is $5 per capita for the biennium, and that's to build public health infrastructure and capacity that supports public health services in Nevada. Right now, we are 50th as far as public health funding, out of 51.
Fifty-first.
Yeah, so we're.
Fifty-first.
Well, the last I saw it was 50, out of 51.
We're number one.
Yeah. So Nevada, it, we have 6.75 cents, so $6.75 that goes towards public health funding. The median is $38.13. The range is $5.74, up to $139.35. If this is approved, this will take us to 49th. So, we're hoping at least to get this established, these funds, they are going to be based on population, and it will be distributed to public health authorities, established under NRS 439. How the bill reads right now, it says health districts, and we are going in for an amendment for public health authorities, and so we are asking for that amendment. Something else with this bill, it's got public health funding and some language about FQHCs. Senator Spearmann had put the FQHC language in there, and basically it's saying that if there's been a crime by an executive board member or management, then that FQHC cannot receive the funds. It was spoken the other day that they're really two separate bills.
I was going to say, so I think suffice it to say, it's a bill that will receive, I hope will receive consideration, but it's going to require a lot of amending and separation. But I would, I would strongly urge all members of the public, as well as the board, to take a look at it and to, to express your support to the legislature, because as Nikki pointed out, we, Nevada specifically, has very little public health support, and I think that that's reflected in our dismal statistics on almost every health, poor health measure that there is. And so the idea behind this small effort is to at least get some beginning public health infrastructure to reverse that trend.
So where, where are they, where's the $5 coming from? What's the revenue source?
Right now, the revenue, it's not put in the governor's budget. What, another bill that we're working on, that I'll talk about in a little bit, is the tobacco and e-cigarettes. So we have suggested what we're looking at is taxing the e-cigarette products, just as tobacco products are taxed, and that would raise enough revenue to fund this. Also, if I can add on the FQHC language, Assemblyman Sprinkle and Senator Spearmann are going to be discussing that language, and she's amenable to looking at amendments on that. So any questions on that additional?
So Nikki, does AB 97 tell us what we have to spend the money, or do you see that coming in an amendment? Or are they going to let us implement our own plans? What do you see happening in that?
This bill is designed to implement our own plans, based on our community health needs assessments. So it's looking at the needs within each community. So it will be distributed to those counties or health authorities that have gone through the community health needs process, and know what their priorities are.
So if I can add a little bit to that, we're kind of ahead, well, we are ahead of the game in Carson City, because we do have a community health needs assessment in place, and have revised it as time goes by. The bill does allow other communities to actually do their needs assessment, and that's one of the things that I think from a statewide standpoint has always come up, is the state administers, you know, certain health funds, but how do they know what people need? And so that, to me, it's a useful part of the bill. But for Carson City, we're ahead of the game.
Yes, and how that funding would work for those counties that need to conduct a community health needs assessment, then the state is going to be funding that, based on population.
Just to follow up, and then you don't see any conditions in the bill that were, will require us to do other health funding, or thresholds, or any of that nature? Because oftentimes, you know, there'll be conditions to be able to access the dollars. So you're seeing it as every single county would, if it gets amended, would get the $5 per capita, no matter the condition?
Well, it depends, is it for a community health needs assessment priority, or is it for conducting a community health needs assessment? They're not going to just be able to take the money and apply it anywhere, or supplant. There's no supplanting allowed within this, and that does say that in there.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about, is it'll start saying that you have to increase your health spending, so you'll have some local governments that don't spend anything, they don't even have a health plan, so they won't have to worry, that's, you know, anyway.
And one of the amendments that we're asking for is, you know, yes, some of the counties will not spend, so, you know, this 15, we're calculating it to be 15 million. We're also asking that some, if there's counties that do not use any of the money, that that money be retained in the event of a public health emergency. You know, because like, Dr. Pintar brought up.
As opposed to going back into the budget.
Yeah, and like, Dr. Pintar brought up about the measles outbreak in Washington, those outbreaks are very time-consuming and expensive. So that's one of the amendments that we're asking, and we'll see where that all goes. Okay, so the next one is e-cigarettes and tobacco. So there's a group, the Nevada Tobacco Control Group, that is working on the bill on this, and it's to establish the age for purchase of tobacco products as 21, that's called T-21. Include, like I talked about, the vaping products in the tobacco products for the purpose of taxation, and Senator Ratty is helping with that portion of the bill, to license the e-cigarette and tobacco retailers, to prohibit e-cigarette vaping wherever smoking is prohibited, so that's to go into the Clean Indoor Air Act and amend that. And, and then also, when I see a type on this, I apologize for that, to utilize the extra tax to fund the Public Health Improvement Fund and Tobacco Prevention.
Nikki, since cannabis is taxed separately, is it also going to fall under other vaping products? And is it going to be taxed, or is it proposed that it's going to be taxed additionally by this?
No, we have not brought marijuana into this, because, you know, that's separate, we didn't want to.
But how do you know what's in a vape pen? You don't know?
Exactly, well, okay, let me back up. So any products that are sold at, say, a vape shop, if there's products that have marijuana in that, then yes, they would be taxed under this. But we wanted to leave the marijuana issue strictly, you know, it's already been passed and that, but if it's in an e-cigarette product, then yes, we would ask for it to be taxed, because it'd be covered under that vaping.
Sort of the good news, bad news, is as tobacco use decreases, so then the prospective revenue goes down, unfortunately vaping is increasing. So you can look at that as good news, is that the prospective revenue goes up, but it's not the good news, because we really don't want people vaping. Anyway, having said that, there, it seems like there would be enough revenue if these were included, and there, there has not been a concerted effort to disapprove the quote-unquote "other tobacco products" within the, so.
Okay. Question. Aren't those already getting a sales tax? So are you suggesting, so the other products are getting a sales tax when you retailly buy it, are you suggesting that it'll now turn into a cigarette tax, which will reduce the sales tax? So because you'll push it under, or you're going to double?
Yeah, I think, I think it's both.
Cigarette tax is both.
Adriana, do you know?
Because cigarettes get a stamp from the, you know, they get an actual cigarette retailer.
And I'm sure, maybe, maybe Dan knows.
Well, maybe you can just look into that, because again.
I'll check into that. My, my understanding is it's a separate tax. And tobacco products.
I think, yeah, you pay sales tax, and then you, and then, so that's, when you look at, to kind of extend that, what are the deterrents to using tobacco products, or vaping products, or any tobacco product, is the price and of it. And so from a public health perspective, when you increase the price, you decrease the use, and thus decrease the health problems. From a financial perspective, you want more people to vape, so you get more money.
It's counterintuitive, right?
I'll take both ends of that stick.
Right.
Any additional questions on that bill? Okay, moving on, on the behavioral health, last session, they approved the establishment of behavioral health policy boards, there are four in the state. I am a part of the Northern Nevada Regional Behavioral Health Policy Board, and each policy board got one BDR, and the BDR that our policy board agreed upon is to clarify and standardize some of the language in 430, NRS 433A, which is the legal hold. There was some cleanup to do there, and that is what we chose to work on due to the problems that our local hospitals are facing. Any questions? Another bill is the Mobile Outreach Safety Teams. This is a bill that was introduced by Assemblyman Kramer, and this is to award grant money to local governments, or a bona fide agent in counties less than 100,000, and it's to And it's to support those community outreach safety teams, or the most teams that you all have heard about and that we have seen in Carson City, that it has been very successful.
So, because we already have it, does it mean that it would fund another team for us? Does this have a non-supplant?
I have not seen a non, you know, that you can't supplant within this bill yet. I haven't went through it with a fine-tooth comb. But, you know, we're, our safety team, it's, it's a limited amount of time, and so I see this as a plus to our community, that maybe we can increase the time that our safety, our most team is out there helping.
Well, and maybe in the future, this one can come back to us for an action item.
And at some point, maybe, I would like to see our public health funding bill come back after amendments to come back, yes, see if we can support that. Okay, so, that concludes my introduction of the legislative priorities. Of course, we're kind of working on everything that comes up. There's been many others that I've been down there and been working with partners on, so, but I wanted to especially bring those to your all attention. And I also wanted to take just a minute to congratulate Frances Ashley and let you all know, you can come up.
This is for Frances White.
So, Carson City Health and Human Services received the PRISM Award for 2018 for Exceptional Ryan White Services at a conference. This is presented by the state, and it's presented to Carson City Health and Human Services, but Frances is our Ryan White Team of One. And what she works on is a retention and care project. So, it's getting those individuals that have been in care for HIV or AIDS, getting them back into treatment, finding out what the barriers are and trying to overcome those barriers. And so, I just wanted to recognize her today and let you all know, you know, what's going on under our roof.
We're very proud of Frances. She's, puts her heart and soul into this, as well as lots of other things at Health and Human Services, and thank you for this, and I'm very pleased that you got that award.
And if I can just add, she, this is for the entire state that she does this, so, she does a great job. And then I wanted to let you all know that we have a improvement, a quality improvement project that's in progress, and I'm going to let Sarah Johnson, who is our public health educator through our Adolescent Health Program, she approached us to do a quality improvement project to make our health department more teen-friendly and has developed a relationship with Carson City, the high school, and is now in there doing classes. This has been a long time trying to get in there, and she was able to accomplish that. So, I'm going to let her tell a little bit about her community, excuse me, her quality improvement project and how she's getting those students involved.
So, my quality improvement project, as Nikki said, was to make the clinic more teen-friendly. And so, a part of that, I actually did a couple of projects with this, but a part of that was to get over in Carson High and do a group and have students volunteer to run an art contest over there. And then the winners would actually, their projects would be hung in our clinic and displayed. And our theme was "Winter in Carson City," and our, yeah. So, the kids actually judged the winners. I had nothing to do with it. So, we let them, and excuse this taking, this is the third prize winner, this was Christopher Curtis in grade 11. Okay, that wasn't mounted yet. And then the second prize winner, see, oh, sorry, is Candace Elizabeth Clark, and it doesn't say the grade she's in, but she's the second prize winner. And then first prize winner is 10th grade, and it's Cassandra Medina Torres. So, these will be hung in our clinic, and we also are going to be doing, together with Ronnie, we're going to be remodeling the clinic and make it more comfortable and teen-friendly, family-friendly. So, that's a part of my project.
Thank you, Sarah. I think, well, you, the public may not be aware, but Carson City Health and Human Services delivers a lot of health services to the teens of our community, and it's, so it's important that it be an area that's not, I don't want to say not too grown-up, because it is, we do want to treat them as grown-ups, but that it not be too intimidating. And so, I'm very pleased that Sarah's been working on this project. So, when you have a chance, walk over there, pretend you're a teenager again.
Not yet. We're not done yet. It's a slow process. Thank you.
And if I can just add, when she first started this project, her goal was to do tours of the health department for the high school students, so that they came over, were introduced to the lobby, they did a tour, they found out what services we do, and hopefully making them a little bit more comfortable in coming to the health department.
Well, and it was there that we just, that we realized that it wasn't a very friendly place, so that, you know, from, from those appearances. So, that's where this project came from. So, I'm pleased, I think it'll be nice.
It's a project that has evolved into many different things. So, that concludes the Director's Report.
I don't think we have to do-
No.
It's for discussion only. So, Nikki, if you want to go on into Item 21D, which is also for discussion, which is a brief overview of human services.
Did you?
Right?
Yeah, you missed C.
Oh, okay, let's do C then, if you cross budgets.
This is what you were talking about, the education.
I know, the orient, yes, the continuing education. So, we'll all know what we're supposed to be doing here up there on the G.I.S.
Yeah, so this is the Carson City Board of Health, Orientation and Reorientation. I'm going to just start with a little video that very nicely discusses what public health is.
Hello, and welcome to this video where we're going to talk about public health. Public health has made a significant impact on the health of populations, making people healthy and saving lives. For example, in the United States, between 1900 to 1999, people's life expectancy has increased by over 30 years. Did you know that 25 of these extra years gained are due to public health interventions? So, in this video, we're going to take a look at what public health is, how it's different to clinical medicine, who's responsible for doing it, and how it's done. First of all, let's have a look at what health is. The World Health Organization defines health as a state of complete physical, mental, and social well-being, rather than a mere absence of disease or infirmity. This is a pretty bold and ambitious definition that prompts people to look beyond diseases and focus not only on the physical aspect of health, but also on the mental and social aspects as well. And public health? Well, public health is the science and art of preventing disease, prolonging life, and promoting health through the organized efforts of society. Okay, so how is it different to clinical medicine? Let's take a look at an example. Let's say someone has an accident and has a broken leg. A clinician's main focus is the immediate health problem, fixing the fractured leg. Clinicians focus on the individual. The public health approach would be holistic and would focus on figuring out how and why this person had an accident, so that actions can be taken to prevent it from happening again. For example, why did he have the accident? Was there a problem with his vision? Was it poor knowledge of driving skills or bad attitude towards driving? Was he under the influence of alcohol or drugs when he was driving? Are there laws against this and resources to enforce it? What are the community expectations or attitudes towards driving? Does he have a good social support network that will help in his recovery or prevent this from happening again? Was the road he was driving on safe? Was he driving a safe car that was well-maintained? If not, why not? Could he not afford it? If not, why could he not afford it? Does he have a job that doesn't pay well? Why is that? Is it because he did not have access to good education? Was there good access to health services which would determine his treatment and recovery? As you can see from this example, health is determined by a complex interaction between many different factors or determinants of health. These include individual characteristics, lifestyle and behaviors, and also the physical, social, and economic environments, the social determinants of health. In order to make a difference in health, there's action needed across all the different determinants. Public health focuses on these upstream factors to make changes that can benefit the health of the population as a whole. This seems like a very broad and complex task, doesn't it? So, who's responsible for public health? Ultimately, the responsibility of creating a healthy community rests with all sectors of society. Health departments do have a central role in public health. However, improving the health of a population requires the coordinated efforts of a broad range of stakeholders. This includes other areas of government, the private sector, non-governmental organizations, international organizations, and communities, to name a few, all united with a shared goal of improving the health of the public. Now, let's have a look at how public health works. The World Federation of Public Health Associations has developed a useful framework to understand how public health is delivered. There are three core service areas of public health and a group of enablers that ensure that these services can occur effectively and efficiently. The three core areas of public health are protection, promotion, and prevention. Protection is about protecting the health of the population. This includes the control of infectious diseases, managing environmental hazards, ensuring a healthy workplace, and managing health emergencies. Promotion is about improving the health of the population. It covers a broad range of activities that not only focuses on the individual, like promoting health behaviors over life course, it also focuses on improving the social determinants of health. Prevention is about preventing health issues before they occur. It includes activities such as vaccination and screening. To enable these core areas to function, there needs to be good governance, advocacy to influence and obtain support and commitment for actions that support a health goal, capacity, having an adequate, well-trained and supported public health workforce, and having accurate, timely information to support health actions such as relevant research, surveillance, monitoring, and evaluation. So, that's a quick introduction to the fascinating field of public health. We've had a look at what it is, how it's different to clinical medicine, who's responsible for doing it, and how it's done.
Could you hear it okay? So, we, we just felt that that little video really summed up what public health is, and what went further to do was to show you that, you saw the model that they presented there, and I wanted to make that equate into what we are doing at the health department. So, under prevention, you look at our, and I'm just going to touch a few things, I'm not going to go into great detail, but you look at our clinical services and our human services. We have programs that provide screening, immunizations, preventing homelessness, which is those social determinants of health. And you may have heard that your zip code is more important to your health than your DNA. So, where you live can be more important. Under promotion, we've got our Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion Division and Human Services. Under Chronic Disease Prevention, we've got the Tobacco Prevention and Control Program, the Ryan White Program that I spoke about earlier, and of course, Human Services for improving those social determinants of health, or at least trying to. And protection, we've got environmental health, public health preparedness, epidemiology and disease surveillance. So, it's those restaurant inspections, the pool inspection, plan reviews, preparing the community for the, in the event of a disaster or public health emergency, looking at those disease surveillances, what diseases are happening? Are we going to have, you know, are we having a measles outbreak? And then prepare, like I said, preparing for public health emergencies. And then our governance, of course, is you all, as the Carson City Board of Health. Advocacy, we've got Nevada Public Health Association, which we're involved with quite a bit, especially right now, since we're in legislative session. Nevada Public Health Foundation, there's many other national public health groups. And then we've also got our Public Health Accreditation Board, which we can have, get information from. Looking at our capacity within Carson City Health and Human Services, we have a workforce development plan. And then, of course, information, we've got the surveillance systems, all of our community partnerships, government partnerships, national partnerships, and again, public health accreditation. So, public health in Nevada, it focuses on the health of the population, and as you heard from the video, public health isn't just about the health department, but it's how do we link our community health improvement plan and our strategic plans with all those other partners to look for better health outcomes. So, in Nevada, there's basically three health authorities, public health authorities. There is us, Southern Nevada Health District, Washoe County Health District, and then the State of Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health takes care of the rest of the state. Within the three local health authorities, there's 93% of the population within our jurisdictions. So, the NRSs and NACs that relate to public health, 439, which is the Public Health Administration, 441A, the Communical Diseases, 442, maternal and child health, and then 446 for our food establishments. And then, of course, we have the corresponding NACs. So, as far as the Carson City's Board of Health, it was formed November 13, 2003, and what this did was place the public health programs in the hands of the local government of Carson City. We were unique in that we could have chosen to go a county board of health or a city board of health, and it was chosen to be a county board of health. Again, that is when it was formed. The bylaws were adopted March 17, 2011. Since it's been, since 2011, I have asked if there's any updates that have, that we need at this point. I do need to make a correction as far as like the role calling. We don't have a vice chair and have not had one since I've been involved. I know that it's been brought up, maybe we add that to the bylaws. So, I'm happy to work with all of you and work with the DA's office and see what bylaws changes we need, and we can bring them forth at a different, at a future meeting. And then we're, we have Carson City Municipal Code, Title IX- And then we're, we have Carson City Municipal Code, Title IX. It talks about the county health officer. We're supervised by the State of Nevada Health Division. Dr. Pintar and I go and report to the State Board of Health every quarter. We kind of share that duty. And it talks about the Board of Health duties and powers. So as the county health officer, so her duties are to oversee sanitary conditions.
My favorite one.
Adopt necessary regulations for prevention, suppression, and control of any contagious diseases. So if we have something going on, she can.
Quarantine is my second favorite.
She can quarantine. So she does have quarantine powers. And the administration is provided by the county. And I just laid those out a little bit more. It is NRS 439.350, and it is our, in our CCMC Title IX. And then we also to file a copy of all of its adopted regulations with the county clerk in addition. And then as the county board of health, you may abate nuisances in accordance with the law, establish and maintain an isolation hospital or quarantine station when necessary for the isolation and quarantine of a person or a group of persons, restrain, quarantine, and disinfect any persons or group of persons sick with or exposed to any contagious or infectious disease that is dangerous to the public health. And then, I'm not going to read all of this, but this is, you know, there's additional language about appointing quarantine officers, and then subject to prior review and approval of the county Board of Health Commissioners to adopt a schedule of reasonable fees to be collected for issuing or renewing any health permit or license required. So those are your powers. And then I just want to talk a little bit about the ten essential public health services. All public health authorities are responsible for fulfilling the three core functions of public health. And you'll see that's on the outer portion of this circle, assessment, policy development, and assurance. And then within these three core functions, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has identified 10 essential public health services that describe the work of public health. So, monitor health, diagnose and investigate, inform, educate, and empower, mobilize community partnerships, develop policies, enforce laws, link to or provide care, assure competent workforce, evaluate, and research. And these 10 essential public health services are really the core of our accreditation as well. And how would you get involved in public health? So, we've got a couple of things here for you to think about. Attend National Association of Local Boards of Health Conference. It's August 14 through 16 in Denver, Colorado. Being a member of the Sexual Assault Response Team or the SART Team, which you all have heard about and have, reports have been given to this board. Participating in the Carson City Health and Human Services Resource, Stewardship, and Advisory Group. I want to thank Supervisor Bonkowski and Supervisor Barrett for being a part of that group. And if anybody is interested in participating, and if anybody wants to step up for that, then we can adjust that. Supporting public health legislation and educating our legislators. And how would you like to get involved? So, any questions?
Thank you, Nikki. Sure.
In our board packet, you're asking for direction on whether or not the bylaws need to be updated, and they seriously need to be updated. So if you wanted to add that to the list, there's all kinds of items in there that need to be updated.
Great, and I'll be, I'll be glad to help, to assist and work with you all on that. And I also would like to know from you all, it's been mentioned to me that a board member would like some reference materials as far as the board of health. And so how, what information can I provide to you all that would help with knowing what your duties and powers are within the board of health, just for your reference?
Often, I think a calendar, you know, some of this, you're asking how we can help. I think it's more you have to help us know how to help you. So, a calendar that sets out when maybe the stewardship advisory, all these different groups, you're working on the chip, you're working on this update, we get a notice from the hospital, they're going to do a survey. If you could have a calendar that we could maybe then put those items into our agendas and schedules so we can become more informed and truly help you. Instead of sending me something three days in advance, can you come to this meeting? If you could at least a quarterly, I don't know. I think that might help us all be able to provide more service.
Absolutely, and thank you for that.
Dan, can, maybe you can tell me how we revise the bylaws?
That's pretty easy. I'm happy to receive instructions from the Board of Health, you know, the next time we agendize this as an action item, and then I can just put pen to pad, make those revisions for you.
All right.
Can we not provide direction based on this agenda item?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was just going to.
Oh. With feedback and direction given by the board supervisors to incorporate into this motion.
So, so direct.
You're right, it does pay for possible action, I'm sorry. Yeah, if, if the board wishes to provide instructions now, I'm happy to receive those instructions and make the work on it.
All right, Trey.
Ready?
Yeah.
I move to accept, what's that?
No, we can ask if there's other comments or public comment. Okay. No, I know. I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay, I move to accept the Board of Health orientation and reorientation presentation, and furthermore, direct staff to bring a draft update of the bylaws with specific direction. Well, that's enough, period.
Motion has been made. Any other discussion?
So, that's just in general, we're not going to give them any bylaw directions?
Specifically, there's, so, I'll give you a little bit of direction, but I think you're going to find some typos in there, so I'd like those removed. It talks about paying the county health officer $25.
Yes.
I'd like that removed or updated. Tell you what, I'll buy you lunch to trade off.
I'm not that cheap.
I'd like the, I'd like the vice chair to actually be enacted so that there's a process for electing the vice chair. So those are the things that I see that I'd like adjusted.
Or the vice chair could just be appointed as the mayor.
Could be, it doesn't matter.
I mean, like you said, that the function be.
I don't care how, but it just.
But there are a few things in there that are outdated.
Right, we don't have a secretary, so that can be removed. And then there's some ambiguity between one line where it says the Carson City Health Officer shall act as chairman of the Board of Health, another place it says one of the duties of the health officer is to appoint a chairman and members of the board committees. So it's, it's just not clear. I understand they're talking about the board committees and not the board of health, but it's still not very clear. And it actually says you just can't pay less than $25.
Okay. Well, we should just fix it.
Take it out.
And that's actually in NRS.
No, that's statutory.
Right.
So, just to provide a couple of suggestions perhaps to the board, you know, if it's not the board's pleasure, what I can do is just ensure that the language that we have in the bylaws is completely compliant with state law as it relates to, you know, the Board of Health. So I'll make sure that those statutory requirements are satisfied. And then also take a look at the election procedure for the vice chair. I think it'll probably be a prudent thing to do as well for clarification purposes to provide that the election of the vice chair and the duties to be provided by the vice chair, and this was at Supervisor Bagwell's recommendation earlier, we had an offline discussion, to clarify in those provisions that there will be no compensation provided to the vice chair in the event the vice chair assumes the duties of the chair in the absence of the chair. So that's just, again, for additional clarity. And then again, you know, happy to look through for typographical errors, grammatical errors, and to restructure the entirety of the bylaws as appropriate, and most importantly, to make sure that it's compliant with state law.
And as the mover, I agree with that.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Discussion has ensued. I see no further discussion, so I'll call for the question. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Whoops, sorry, I didn't have my microphone on for that. Now we can go on to item 21D, which Ms. MJ is going to tell us about.
Hold on just a second. I just, aren't there not six of us? So it showed five, zero. Did I miss something? I just was asking.
She has to manually add it.
Oh, you do? Okay. Sorry, I wasn't trying to call you out. After 20 years, I figured you know what you're doing. Just trying to learn.
She doesn't have a button. I, yeah, I don't have a button, so.
I think you do.
Where?
No, it's teasing you.
See? See?
Well, I'm going on to item 21D. I don't know about the rest of you people. Sorry, MJ. Why don't you tell us about County Human Services?
Okay, Mary Jane Ostrander, manager of Carson City Human Services. And the presentation I have today was a collaborative effort of all my counterparts throughout the state. We originally presented it to the NACO Board of Directors on January 19, 2018. They, it was very well received, and they had asked us to bring it to each of our counties. So, and, let me go back. The purpose is to just kind of give an overview on the similarities and the differences and how each of our counties implement the mandates in our NRS and things. So there's possibly 17 models of human services in Nevada. Although we all do things differently, for the most part, we have our existence rooted in NRS 428, and we design our programs and services to meet the needs of our respective counties. There are additional NRSs, general fund revenue and preventative grant funding that we also consider when we're designing our programs. NRS 428 is our primary chapter and speaks to services for indigent persons. NRS 439B is a secondary chapter and only applies to counties' definition of indigent for medical services. There are other chapters that have county responsibility attached. However, individual counties manage these mandates differently. Some are in the human services departments and some are not. The items in red are not under Carson City Human Services, and because Clark and Washoe have free care agreements with their hospitals, the indigent cares figure differently. You know, one example would be inmate medical. Some budgets have it in the human services, some budgets have it in the sheriff's office. Some of our counterparts have public guardianships in social services. I'm not interested. Just a side note there. But, so in addition to the previously mentioned statutes, there were a number of budgetary and legislative actions approved in the 2011 legislature to transfer specific health and human services to the counties. Again, remembering all 17 counties look different, but for the most part, these are administered by the county human services departments or sister departments in larger counties. And you've heard me talk about the Medicaid match and waiver program. Increase county participation to, one, reduce the eligibility threshold from 156% of SSI rate down to 142%, the first year, and then down to 132% the second year. And number two, the community waiver cost became county responsibility in 2011. So the additional financial cost to the counties in the first year was $6,46,000,000, and second year was about $8.5 million. Consumer and, this is in the public health, but the consumer health protection, STD and TV testing and treatment, several chapters of those NRS relating to public health were amended to transition responsibility, again, to the counties. Developmental services for children was passed down to the counties, and were required to make provisions for the support, education, and care of children with developmental disabilities and related conditions. Child protective services, again, was passed down to the counties. So, the county became responsible for the cost of operating CPS in the counties, in human services processes, the invoices, reviews, reports when sent, and reports show how many CPS call and what types of calls. Now, some of these, the counties were actually given a choice. You can either provide the service yourself, or you could pay the state to do it. So the total cost of these push downs came to $19.3 million to all the counties. Several tax levies mandated in NRS, these levies are accounted for specifically by individual counties. We collect and distribute appropriately, just in different budgets and line items. The first two is the IAF fund and the supplemental fund. They were used differently prior to the Affordable Care Act than they are now that we have the Affordable Care Act. Counties still collect and remit to the state. However, they are combined at the state level into a hospital assessment fund to be used to enhance Medicaid reimbursement rates to support our hospitals. 428.285 requires every county to assess a tax rate of at least 6% and not more than 10% for assistance to indigent persons. One cent of this tax rate is the above-mentioned supplemental fund.
Cents, not percent, right?
What's that?
Cent, it's six to 10 cents, not percent.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, six to 10 cents. And I'm reading this so I can get it right. Most counties pay for their Medicaid match program with that six to 10 cent rate. The Medicaid match is currently capped at eight cents. For rural counties, this is a minimum of 10.5 cents to pay for mandated services. Additionally, counties provide for other operational and direct services to indigent persons through other funding, including general fund, other tax revies, and grant Again, with NRS 428, primary statute for the counties outlines the county responsibilities for miscellaneous financial assistance, hospital care for indigent persons, other medical care, and institutional care. 428 specifically directs counties in the responsibility to provide care, support, and relief to the poor, indigent, incompetent, and those incapacitated by age, disease, or accident. Speaking of legislature, bills that are out right now, we're going to keep an eye on AB 133, which does put 428 at risk of being opened. They want to add, that bill specifically adds to those persons, runaway or homeless youth between the ages of 18 and 24. So we're keeping an eye on that. Lots of questions pertaining to that, and so we'll be responding to, that just came out this morning, so we're preparing our responses. It's a very, 428 is a very broad mandate, and to interpret it differently in each county based on the ability and needs of the respective communities. From the NRS, all the counties do the institutional care as well as burials and cremations, very similar across the board. However, from this point, there are significant differences in the models and interpretations. So various models allow us to meet the unique needs of our counties. And just to go back to the Medicaid match, we're not mandated to participate in Medicaid match. However, if we don't, it is assumed the state would recoup the funding in other assessments to the county. The Nevada State Plan is obligated to fund, and we contract with the state. It's a chessboard. It's a chessboard again, and all the pieces need to align. In 428, the counties are required to approve standards, including eligibility criteria, appropriate money for indigent services, and appoint staff to administer the programs. These become your human services departments and leaders. Several years ago, NACO assisted the counties in establishing these standards through county codes. Some have been updated over time, and some are in the process of needing to be updated to better portray the current climate. Carson City does need to update some codes, so we'll be working on that. NRS 439, it defines indigent as those persons who are not covered by any policy of health insurance. The individual mandate in the Affordable Care Act eliminated the county's responsibility to pay for medical costs, as it is considered a prior resource. The federal government required every person to have a policy of health insurance. That's where our medical costs decreased. And then, in fact, I think it was in 2013, the legislature dropped the term "medical", and it's now just an indigent tax. When the individual mandates became law in 2014, the counties began disassembling the medical programs and began assisting individuals in enrolling with Medicaid or a subsidized program and/or purchasing insurance on the exchange. With the mandates ending, we do still consider the ability to apply for insurance as a prior resource. It's available, there's a subsidized program, so even though it's not mandated, we're still considering it a prior resource. That could be questioned in the future. But our association's keeping a close eye on that, too. The county human services departments are the safety net services in the communities. In our standards, we are the payer of last resort. Thus, we work with the federal, state, and community partners in developing a system approach to services with wraparound services provided throughout the partnerships. Over the years, we have transitioned from the traditional welfare services to a more evidence-informed services with a systematic focus. We reinvented ourselves in order to better serve the communities. This is reflected in our responses to super-utilizers of certain services, our jail diversion programs are involvement with most, and community coalition identifying those super-users. Because we are the local experience, county human service departments are called upon to convene conversations around critical socioeconomic factors that define the quality of life in our communities. Becoming staff of the Board of Health, developing the jail diversion programs for individuals with mental illness, convene and serve on task forces addressing opioids and other illegal drug use, participate in developing strategies to support the lack of transportation and housing, address the high-cost super-utilizers through discharge planning efforts and multidisciplinary teams. This is a growing component of our responsibilities. It is a great benefit to our counties as we are better positioned to influence positive outcomes for individuals in our communities. Also, the ACA has allowed us to design programs to meet the needs of the communities. We're no longer just stuck with the payment of medical assistance. We can do some prevention programs. And we are now intervening in and convening these high-level conversations to identify opportunities to assist residents in a more fiscally responsible way. Programs and services are designed at the local level to meet individual county and community needs. Mandated services take priority over other services. However, our preventive, cost-effective programs are considered in an effort to reduce the burden to the county budget. These services are often provided through the federal, state, and community partner funding. Some examples of those across northern Nevada would be the crossroads up in Washoe County, independent living programs for seniors, public guardian, assisted living, memory care, housing programs, most fast programs, our community coalition here in Carson, and the efforts of the Behavioral Health Task Force. Ultimately, your county human services leaders work to balance your responsibilities to the NRS with your responsibilities to the taxpayers. In conclusion, I am happy to narrow down on any of these topics in more detail at any future meetings, if you would like. And if you're interested in ever attending our association meetings or at least seeing the minutes in the agendas, please pop me an email. You know, we'd love to have you. And I will entertain any questions.
So, with all the changes in the, what was the Indigent Accident Fund and all of that, is the liability for the local governments capped to the tax rate?
Yes.
Or it is capped?
Yes.
So, we don't have?
Yes, once we hit that tax rate, we no longer pay that county match bill. However, once a year, we do apply to, there was some funds set aside for the times a county does not meet those funds. And so, at the end of the year, in Carson, historically, their costs have gone over that tax rate. So, historically, we have applied every year, and so from that fund that's set aside from the IAF supplement, that will pay the state the difference that the county was unable to meet.
So, the taxpayers, let's try it a little bit differently, for an example. So, let's pretend we got $1 million is our responsibility. We paid all that, and then we had somebody come in with needing diagnostic help or something with a child that's disabled. Do we have that exposure? Or that's what I mean by the cap, is we don't have to spend any more dollars. The powers were very broad of what we have to provide. But does the statute actually cap our liability at the amount of the rate?
With the developmental services, which that child would fall under rather than the match, yeah, rather than the match, we are capped at our state assessments. So, the state provides us the assessments every year, and we don't go over that. However, last year, they changed the contract for developmental services. So, though we might be capped at this year, next year's assessment will make up for what we were unable to pay this year. Does that make sense? Okay.
Well, and I think, Lori, you may also be asking the question, if there was some catastrophic event, that victim or victims fell under the indigent fund, where would the extra money come from? And that's what MJ is saying, is that there's a sort of extra, I, extra isn't the right word, but there's some additional funding that can be requested. I can't tell you if there's a maximum to that, though.
No, we could apply to the state supplemental fund. That is still there. So, with the catastrophic hospital bill, we can submit to the supplemental fund. That's done once a year through the NACO Board, and the NACO Board will distribute those funds accordingly, just depending on the available monies that they have.
Since it just came out this morning, I don't imagine you know how people are feeling about this, including runaways from 18 to 24 and homeless for me. Do you have any reading on where that came from and how you are going to approach that?
Um, no. No.
Honest answer, thank you.
No, it is a thing, you know, and a concern, of course, is opening up 428, because once it's open, they can, you know, move all kinds of things around.
Lori, you know how this system works.
So, you know, it's, you know, your immediate gut reaction, I understand the intent of it. However, I think that we need some truly defined criteria, especially between that age of 21 to 24, just with the concern on we could get hit pretty hard if we don't have more criteria than that age, and I ran away.
Thank you. Watch that one closely.
My question is about how we handle indigent burials or indigent cremation. I guess we do cremation, not burials. Have we bid that? Do we just, is it a rotational thing? So, I guess I'll liken it to my time with the city. If there was an auto accident, the tow companies in Carson were on a rotational basis. And I'm not trying to minimize, you know, funeral homes to tow companies.
Right, right, right.
But, so there's a rotational basis, and if someone needed a tow, you called whoever was on for that month, whether it be A, B, company A, B, or C.
Yes.
So, I guess my first question is, do we do that with funeral homes? And if we do, who manages that? And secondarily, who sets the rate that we pay for indigent burials?
They are on a rotation. I'm not positive who manages that. I believe the hospital, you know, has a piece of that. Most often, that's who's calling them out.
I would think the coroner would own it, but.
Yes, I believe the sheriff's office through the coroner.
It's definitely the office of the coroner. So, really, the only way Health Department gets involved is if there's an indigent burial to pay for that. So, you can't really answer the rotation question or whether good comes with bad in terms of the cost for the cremation of the indigent.
Yeah, and each funeral home can sign up to be on rotation. They're not required to be on rotation. And then, it's usually after, you know, the pickup and things like that, that discovery is made that it could be an indigent burial.
So, I guess my question is, if they sign up to be on rotation, they're mandated to accept whatever we decide to pay for indigent cremations?
Yeah, are they mandated? I know that it's been agreed upon. I'm, you know, that's, I think, okay.
And so, that's my question. It's not, I guess what I'm saying is, I'd like to see that into some kind of an agreement or contract or something. It seems like it's, I'm concerned that we have some exposure. It's probably not an agenda item, but maybe it should be a future agenda item.
Wasn't that in your schedule of fees? The amount that we pay?
It could be in our code, yeah.
Yeah.
If it's there, then.
It is there, yeah.
For sure?
And it gives the amount, yeah.
That we pay for indigent burials. Okay. Okay.
I think, I know this has been discussed, but it was a few years ago, probably bears visiting. The interesting thing to me was, if you have a funeral home in the county, they're not required to be in this rotation, and that was one of the items, I guess, of discussion. Can you make them all be in that rotation?
Well, I wouldn't want a mandate to do that, but, I mean, as you said, you often don't know when you're picking up the decedent, if it's going to be an indigent, you know, service, or if there are funds to pay for it. So, you know, I guess you got to take the good with the bad. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comment? Thank you, Ms. MJ, for your report.
Thank you.
I will entertain an action to adjourn as the Board of Health by everybody saying goodbye. Goodbye.
Can we call for final public comment?
Didn't I?
No.
I asked for public comment. All right, another public comment, question, query.
Just didn't hear it on the.
We all said goodbye anyway. Thank you. See you in May? Because we moved to this one, so May.
I think, just to be safe, let the record reflect that concluding public comment was requested, and then nobody answered.
All right, we're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're going to take up item number 25. These are some bills. Let me just, I think Nancy's going to walk us through it. We have Wes Henderson here. I asked Nancy to put all the bills requested by NACO and the League of Cities up before us in the interest of transparency, because, you know, I'm sensitive to the issue that some might think that we, because we belong to both those organizations, belong to both the League of Cities and NACO, that we may be shifting, you know, our responsibility to those entities to avoid taking an action here at our board, which is the proper place to take those. And so, not all these things are something that we have to address, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody saw everything that both those boards were doing. Wes is here to, he's the executive director of the League of Cities. Dagny is at another meeting this morning with the Director of Transportation at 11. She could be here at 1:00. I don't know that we're going to need her, but if we do, we can have her come back over after we do lunch. So, Nancy, do you want to start us off?
Yes. So, this first action is on four NACO bills. The board may vote to either support, oppose, or remain neutral, but NACO is requesting that the board vote in support of these bills. So, the first one is SB 12. This bill allows the revenue collected from the 911 surcharge to be used to pay for the cost of an analysis or an audit of the surcharges collected by the telecommunications providers. Currently, the treasurer, when this initially was passed, the surcharge, the treasurer's office received a list of the providers from the PUC, and unless an audit is performed, we wouldn't know if everyone is paying the surcharge over to the city. So, and with audits are getting more expensive, and audit would probably cost between, I don't know, $10,000 and $15,000, or maybe even a little more than that. So, that's SB 12.
Why don't we take up one at a time? Can we do that, Dan? On SB 12, yeah, the theory there is that there's a whole bunch of telecommunications providers out there, and we don't know which ones are paying and which ones aren't. I mean, we have an idea. So, the theory of the NACO Board was, give us an authority, because we don't have the authority under the 911 statutes right now, to do an audit or to request an audit. And I think that a number of counties will be doing that. We could probably join together and find out, you know, who's doing what out there. My sense is, you know, my own two senses, this is something we could probably support. Others, we probably just stay neutral on, or, you know, unless we're hard bent over, we just say no. But I think this is one where, you know, it's enabling. We don't have to do it, but it's probably a good idea to find out what's out there so we're not letting anybody fall through the cracks. That's my two cents.
All right, question. Are you saying that we could do this with the other counties and spread the cost?
I think you could. I mean.
I don't think it's in the legislation.
It's not in the legislation, but the idea is there. I mean, we could, you know.
Joint audits.
We could do that. We could do a joint audit. I mean, that's my two cents.
I bet they may give us a discount if we have multiple counties.
Well, I think, if I may, you know, I think that this was an issue when we enacted this. As city staff, we worked very hard to, you know, pressure and communicate through the legal means available to us for the DA's office and the treasurer with telecommunications companies, and some were reluctant to pay, even after being shown the law. And so, I support this because, you know, I think, and to your point, I think you can join, because, you know, a telecommunicator is probably not operating just in Carson City. They're operating on a regional basis, so there, I think, makes some sense for, you know, a group of five or six or seven or 17 counties to join. So, I support this.
Mr. Mayor, can you tell me why it's not in the legislation, or is that, it just makes it complicated?
What do you mean, not in?
To go jointly.
So, when the law passed, it has nothing to do with audits. The 911 surcharge law is very specific about what you can spend the collected funds on. An audit is not one of the things you can spend the collected funds on.
I understand, I mean, why it's not in the proposed legislation, that we can jointly do it.
Oh, it's because it's enabling. I mean, it allows you to do an audit, how you do the audit. How you do the audit is up to you.
Any public comment on this?
And just, just another general question, too. When you look at the 911 for the charging, and again, I don't know if NACO's interested in looking, that there actually should be penalties assessed if you do not pay? Because I don't notice that in there either. It just says, you know, you can charge up to a...
We tried, we tried, so when we went back, when I was still with the city, and we went back to change some of the wording to allow for radio infrastructure and some of those things, we tried to get a penalty put on. And that got removed, because the telecommunicators complained too loudly. So that did not pass. It might be a different story.
I'm just recommending that all the other statutes that I used to audit for the state, so, you know, that's part of the penalty of getting audited, especially for those that, I would say, paid zero versus underreporting. There's the penalty for not reporting. So I support what they're trying to do in SB 12. I just am suggesting there's some other recommended amendments that we may want to try to address at the same time. Because if you go out and audit someone, that's great. But if there's no penalty, we're actually suggesting that you don't pay. I mean...
I would have to agree with Stacy. This is a different legislature, so that you might be able to get it in. I don't know if NACO wants to take that task, but we could add that.
Actually, in CCMC, the Treasurer's Office gave me this, Section 4. It allows for a penalty of 5% on surcharges that a supplier fails to emit within 90 days after the date that it was due.
So we need to find out who...
Is this defined within that? I don't, we need to double check. But it's defined in there as an actual...
Right.
You know, that it's going to fall in the right statutory language for the surcharge.
Okay, yeah, we'll check that.
All right. Stacy, any public comment? I missed that. Stacy, you want to make a motion on this one? We'll see where it goes.
I move to support SB 12.
Second?
There's a motion in a second on the motion. Let me get my... Where am I here? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, pose nay, okay. There it is, there it is. All right, let's take up SB 13. Nancy, did this one, Senate Bill 13 comes, I'll let you take over here in a minute, Nancy, but I don't know that we need to get behind this one. I think it comes out of what happened on October 1st, the shooting in Las Vegas, where there was an issue was, you know, if somebody wanted to donate to a county and they wanted to give it to individual individuals, that you needed a charitable, you actually had to have the legal authority to do that. And so, what this is attempting to do is allow a community who's in that situation to create a charitable organization to accept tax deductible gifts that can then be used to pay individuals who have been, maybe harmed in a mass shooting, such as what happened or a mass catastrophe that happened in Las Vegas. That's what this is. I mean, I don't know that we need to do that here, but we have had a shooting here on September 10th, I think, on September 11th, 2011, with the IHOP shooting. But, you know, it's probably enabling, but I don't have strong feelings one way or the other on this one.
What did we do with Officer Howell? How did we handle Officer Howell's? I don't think government should do this, but...
Officer Howell was done through individual, it was through the police. They did it through their own association.
Maybe the association, I don't believe this...
We didn't have to...
We didn't do anything there, no.
Yeah, because...
I'm in favor of just taking no position.
Neutral.
This, I talked a little bit to Sheriff Lombardo about this, and they had some real issues, as you probably heard, about the One October event and the coordinating of funds. And so, you know, there was such an outpouring, and so that's really where this came from. And so, I, you know, I think I agree that, I don't know that it's pertinent for us.
Somebody, public comment on this issue? I think what I'm seeing is, somebody want to make a motion to stay neutral?
Can I comment first?
Go, go, I'm sorry.
My preference would be that instead of making a motion to be neutral on this, that we make a motion to monitor this. So then we're deferring, making a decision on this, rather than making a decision today. I just think there's more benefit to us to watch this and see where it goes before we make a decision if we're kind of ambivalent on it.
Fair enough, I think.
Or take no action at all.
Well, I think no, I think what it says is, we're going to remain neutral, but we're going to monitor. I think is what you're saying.
You think we don't have the option to make a motion to remain, to monitor?
No, if I could, just, under the recommendations in the staff report, there's also the option, the chairman has the power to just, based on your conversation here, just refer it back to staff with, you know, the recommendation to just monitor it.
Anybody have a difficulty if I send it back to staff to monitor the provisions of Senate Bill 13?
I don't have any issue, but I would think all of these would be monitored for amendments and changes and...
It will be.
Anyway, but it's no problem.
To Brad's point, the only, I mean, if you say we're neutral now, we've taken a position. And if something changes in the law that makes it more appealing to us, or less appealing to us, then, you know, we've, yeah, I agree with you, Brad.
Yeah. I'm not certain, I'm not certain that's exactly correct, but on the other hand, it doesn't really matter. The idea is to monitor it. So unless there's objection, I'm going to shoot this back to staff and say, keep your eye on Senate Bill 13, let us know if there's any changes to it. All right, let's take up AB 21. This authorizes the Board of County Commissioners in certain counties, not us, to appoint members with certain local governing boards under certain circumstances. This deals with folks who, in some of the counties, they can't, they don't have enough people to fill all the boards that they've got. And so this is a way to try and, you know, make those boards still function. Doesn't apply to us, so my two cents on this one is that we monitor this one as well, send it back. So unless there's an objection, public comment? Send this back to staff to monitor this one. All right.
Yeah, different recommendation, fewer boards.
AB 82, this is the one that would restore the issue of who gets to vote in a general election. As everybody knows, a couple, can't remember how many sessions ago this was, where the law was changed to say if there are only two members of the same party in the primary, that the winner there wins, and that there's no general election. The issue that comes before the NACO board was that there are a lot of people who may be independent, who would still like to vote on who that is, and that they feel disenfranchised. And so, that's why this is there. My sense is, you know, whatever you want to do, my sense is, you may want to monitor this one as well, but, you know, so, but Brad?
My preference would be to support this. I think it's been an issue in the last two elections, where independents are being disenfranchised because they don't get a voice at all. You know, what ends up happening is, in the primaries, one party elects your representative, and the other party, and the independents, don't even get a vote.
And I strongly support this. I think we should, I can't, I think, this was, Settlemire, this was Settlemire's bill, he didn't intend for it to have the ramifications that it did. And I strongly support this bill.
Thank you both. As the only nonpartisan on this, nonpartisan board, registered nonpartisan, I agree with Stacy and Brad.
All right. Comments are in order.
Just as a point of reference, this doesn't affect us, because we're a nonpartisan board. It only affects partisan boards like Douglas and Lyle.
Right, but I still say, support.
But I still think it's bad policy.
All right. Well, it looks like the board wants to vote on this one, so who wants to make a motion to support? And we'll see where it goes.
I would make a motion to support AB 82.
Second?
There's a motion in a second on AB 82. Public comment? Don't hear anybody? Okay. Discussion's in order.
So, I can support it, but I don't necessarily think the legislation is written well. I think that there's some gaps and some other unintended consequences, but again, I'm sure through amendment process and fixes, some of that will get clarified and fixed. But I'm just, the concept that you're trying to put forward, I can support.
Lori's point is well taken, but, and these all have to be monitored, because he can go anywhere.
All right, further discussion on this particular piece of legislation? I don't see any. All in favor of this, of supporting AB 82? Signify by saying aye. Pose nay, carried, okay. Let's now take up item 25 Bravo. This is Senate Bill 48. This is a NACO bill authorizing certain local governments, that's all the rural counties other than Washoe and Clark, to impose diesel taxes under certain circumstances. Nancy, you want to take us through this, please? If you're ready?
Yes.
Let me say, before you go there, there are two bills on this. Actually, you know, there was one bill, actually, there are three. There was one bill that did the same thing last legislative session, and it passed both houses, I think, was amended, and then died before it got to the floor of the Assembly, after it went through the Senate, for whatever reasons it died. This year, there are two bills. One is Senate Bill 138, which is done by Senator Gogacchia, and joint sponsors Assemblyman Ellison out of Elko, to do essentially the same thing that the NACO bill does. My understanding is, it's really kind of a backstop in case the NACO bill runs into problems or whatever. But I think the issue there, Nancy, you correct me if I'm wrong, is that right now, the rural counties, other than Clark and Washoe, are the only ones who don't charge any diesel tax for the local government.
Right, the city receives no diesel tax. It goes to the state and the feds.
Got to speak up, Nancy.
Sorry. Right now, Carson City receives no diesel tax. There is tax on diesel, but it goes to the state and to the federal government.
Shoot, go.
Nancy, I think for the public and for the board, I think it's important to actually tell them what the current taxes are on diesel fuel versus gasoline, because I don't want it that people think the diesel tax isn't being done, and it's not necessarily fair. It's the distribution of it, but that they're almost identical currently without this additional tax. It's just going to different distribution sources. So if you could just, on the record, put that, because I think it's important.
Right, so the tax on the per gallon of gas is 52 cents right now, of which 15 cents goes to Carson City, 18 cents goes to the state, and 18 cents goes to the federal government. On a gallon of diesel fuel, 27, almost 28 cents goes to the state, and 24 cents goes to the feds, and for a total of 52 cents also, per gallon.
Yeah, just two comments on this. First, maybe the biggest impact of this bill from the last session, and it's also in this bill, is that a portion of this revenue goes towards building and maintaining, or does it maintain as well? I don't remember if it maintains, but it builds truck parking lots along the major transportation corridors. So, there was a change in the law for how a truck driver has to keep track of the hours that they're driving, and it went from a manual entry in a logbook to an electronic entry. So now there's no fudging on that. When they come up against their deadline for driving, they have to pull over wherever they are, which creates a lot of problems. This would build the first statewide truck parking network, which would hopefully become a template for the entire country. So there's a lot of interest across the country in looking at this bill in the last session, and again, this session, to see if this can be created as a template, as a possible solution for the truck parking problem across the country. So that's one reason that I think we should look seriously at supporting this. Secondly, going to John's continual argument, is that we don't have any opportunities to find revenue to fix our roads. This is one of them, so we need to consider it.
Thank you. You're already doing what I asked you.
This is enabling, too. I mean, it passes, I don't think you have to do it, but I think it's going to take another board vote to implement it, if that's the road you go down.
Right. Do you want me to...
That road doesn't have any potholes in it. Okay. Public comment?
Can I just ask for a point of clarification? So, are you saying that if we implement it, they would take 50% of our money to build the truck? Or they're going to do it out of their existing 27 cents of the diesel money they have?
It's not 50%. It's a, there's a calculation in the law that says how much of that money goes towards the truck parking.
In amount which is not more than 50% of the amount deposited in the trust account for that county during the fiscal year.
And I thought it was in counties only that sold more than 10 million gallons?
10 million gallons?
Right.
What is ours?
So ours is around seven, I believe.
Seven million?
Almost eight million.
Eight million? So right now, it would exclude us?
Right.
But if we hit the 10 million, then we'd lose 50% of it to the truck stop, right?
And we also would, the tax would generate more than I thought it would. It's almost 395,000 for Carson City. Lyon County, you know, theirs would be huge. It's like over $2 million.
Well, Lyon County is, Lyon County sits on the major highway. I mean, and Fernley, that's one of the things that's going on there. And I don't know how the Fernley thing's going to work out, Fernley and Lyon County, but that, they need a truck stop. And I think that's one of the reasons why, I think, anyway, why the Trucking Association is, supports this type of legislation, because it's going to build truck stops. That's my, that's my understanding of it, anyway, but...
Did you want me to talk about the two different ways that it could be implemented?
Sure.
Yeah. So it could either be implemented by the board adopting an ordinance by a two-thirds majority, or if it's approved by a majority of the voters in a general election.
Either way. Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
And then, why are we doing a resolution, instead of just saying we support it?
I think it was requested by NACO, just to give more credibility to the, to the board's support.
That's my understanding of what it is. I mean, they want to know, they want to be able to hand this out to folks and say, you know, every small county has taken this, passed this resolution, and they're just trying to lock it down, I think, is what it's doing, so. Otherwise, you know, we don't, usually don't have to do those things, but, but my sense is, it's not harmful here. I mean, I don't, you know, it's, but... Okay, what do we want to do? I think I did already.
He just wants to do it.
Want to comment? Sure, come on up. You didn't hear me? Okay. All right, come on up. Come on. Welcome to, again, welcome to Carson City.
I have a question.
Ask up here, ask up here, Steve. Steve, give your question up to us, so...
I'm sorry?
And put your name on the record. I'm sorry.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go.
You're on.
Think you're on, just leave it, show a green light. There you go.
If you press it, it's there you go.
Green is on.
Green is on.
Green is on.
Thank you. There you go. Ms. Paulson, you brought up the tax.
Name? What's your name for the...
Oh, my name. I'm Roger Ward. Do you need my address?
No.
Okay. You brought up the tax information, but in the federal, I believe the federal taxes, diesel fuel, nine cents a gallon more than gasoline, is that correct?
No, I have them both at 52 cents a gallon.
How much is federal?
Oh, federal. So for the diesel, 24 cents is federal, and 28 cents is state.
And for gasoline, the federal is?
Eight, so the state and the feds are both 18 cents.
Okay, so diesel is already taxed already more by the federal government than it is for gasoline?
Correct, by both the federal and the state.
And Carson City has no truck stops, so the trucking industry is not going to, well, I'm sorry, they do have, there's one off of 580 that I believe I saw. But a majority of the gas and, or fuel, diesel fuel in Carson City, would you say is by public people in private vehicles, small contractors, contractors that do public works that are in Carson City, that use diesel fuel almost extensively? And how much of the, what I'm, I think what I'm trying to say is... And, and how much of the, what I'm, I think what I'm trying to say is, you're affecting the people of the county by supporting this. You're affecting small business, you're affecting, you're affecting contractors that do public work that pass that charge on. And I know from experience that as diesel fluctuates, a contractor can get hurt very, very badly when the diesel prices go up, but yet they're on a fixed unit price cost contract to this county or the state. So while it may bring state taxes in parity with gasoline, we're still paying, as diesel owners, an additional tax for, for having diesel.
Does any part of that money that you're paying right now go to Carson City roads?
Carson City roads, and, and you, I've got a limited view. I haven't been in Carson City very long. But in the area that I live, we're wasting money by not maintaining roads, which is costing the public more. I see road deterioration from a lack of just maintenance. There, there's, there's no, I've talked to Public Work Director, there is no shoulder backing program in Carson City. And shoulder backing is where you bring the soils up to the edge of the pavement so that when traffic goes off the edge, that edge doesn't roll off and break up and deteriorate. And it's getting worse and worse. That in turn, shoulder backing program takes care of storm drain runoff, and, and because that's where you gather the material in, and I'm talking about areas with no curb and gutter. But it, it seems to me that there's no real benefit for Carson City in the long run.
What's the, and the, the chairman of the RTC, Regional Transportation Commission, Brad, you want to take on these issues?
Yeah, I think what we just heard was the classic description of a chicken and egg story. Right now, depending on which study you look at, we run between a $7 to $10 million annual deficit in the revenue needed just to do basic maintenance on our road system. So addressing your comments on, are we wasting money by not maintaining our roads? No, we're not wasting money, there's no money there to do that maintenance. We generate about 20% of the funding that we need on an annual basis to maintain our road system. So we have a huge deficit. What we're trying to do is look for every opportunity to fill that gap. And as the mayor said earlier, I think the general feeling on the board is that there should be a nexus between the impact fee or tax and what is being spent on. And in our particular case in Nevada, really, our, our only avenue for generating revenue to maintain the roads is either through a federal grant or through gas taxes. So, you know, we're just trying to do the best we can to look to the sources that we can to try to minimize that 80% annual deficit in maintenance funding that we have.
So can, another question, what is the percentage in rise in consumption of diesel fuel over the last four or five years in Carson City? And the point I'm trying to, that's a question maybe you don't have the answer to immediately, but the point I'm trying to make is, as we get over that, that threshold where the 50% drops up, we're getting short-term money that has an impact long-term to the people that lived here, yet half of it's going to be gone once you reach that threshold.
Yeah, it's not 50%, it's 20%, and it's 50% of the 20%. So 20% of the tax gets put into a trust fund, and up to 50% of that 20% can be spent on the, on the parking lots. But that's a major safety issue when you have 18-wheelers that are just pulling over on the side of the road and trying to find a spot to park. So we need to do something.
And the truck stop that I saw, which was the Maverick, had a parking place for trucks.
Right, but we're not talking about truck stops, we're talking about truck parking areas along the major transportation corridors that need to be planned out, kind of like the, I would, I would relate it to the Tesla charging station network. They need to be planned out at appropriate places along the major transportation corridors, and not where a public, or excuse me, a private for-profit entity decides to put a location.
So that would be a statewide system of truck stops or truck parking areas, right, of which Carson City would not benefit from very much? Am I correct?
We, we don't need to.
We don't need it.
We don't need to, because Lying County would most likely have one that would cover that gap. So you, you don't need to think countywide, you need to think statewide along the transportation corridors. The idea being that there are appropriately spaced places for trucks to be able to pull over and stop when they need to, so that they can plan out their driving schedule. Like, if they know where all the truck parking areas are mapped, they know where they can drive and stop, instead of just trying to pull over off, on an off-ramp. And, and we've all seen that, where you're driving along the freeway, and you see six trucks pulled over on an off-ramp parked, where the drivers are sleeping or, or waiting till they can drive again.
And is that a harm to the public?
Yeah, I think there is. I think that you could probably do the research and find where trucks have been rear-ended, or, when they're not parked appropriately in appropriate spaces, I think there is a hazard to the public.
I think, can I add too? I think there's also infrastructure damage. So these trucks will often not just pull over on the shoulder of the road, but will often pull over into areas that are secondary streets or collector's streets.
Heavy trucks, I, I agree.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that, that's kind of what we're talking about here. So I think in addition to the safety issue, there, there is a, a damage to infrastructure issue by having these trucks on streets that aren't designed to accept that weight.
John, did you want to jump in?
Well, I think Brad and Stacy have covered most of my points, but the other point is that, the infrastructure point that was made by Stacy, we need money for our roads desperately. You're right, you've made my point regarding, or the point I've made before regarding maintenance, but we can't get the money, as Brad has said. And I challenged him to get the money teasingly. He, he and I have had that conversation. But yeah, this, this is a, a way of raising revenue for vehicles that do a little more, are a little tougher on our roads than the average car. The federal government hasn't raised our gas tax, the state government won't raise the gas tax. We don't have much choice but to go find the money where we can. I understand what you're saying about the cost of doing business, but the cost of doing business is something as time goes forward, you just have to ratchet in.
I, I'm just pointing out, or trying to point out, that the diesel revenue that comes to Carson City is more likely to come from private citizens, small businesses that live in this community than it is for the rural long-haul truckers that have, you know, they, they have the truck stops and the terminals in Sparks. And what are we, an hour from, from Sparks in a truck? So in that eight-hour period, you know, you have to have that one hour of rest or every five hours, I believe it is now. We won't be, we won't have that many trucks. I mean, they pass through.
It's not just trucks, it's, it's.
I'm talking heavy equipment trucks, heavy haul trucks.
The diesel trucks, I mean, I, I, as I told you during our break here, I drove a diesel, I, I drove a diesel truck, a Dodge diesel truck for years, and it was surprising to me that I found out that not a dime of what I pay for diesel goes to local roads. I mean, and that's, that's an unfair situation where one person who's got a diesel car doesn't contribute to the roads in Carson City, and the gas, those who use gasoline do. And so, you know, what I come down on it is, you know, one, we definitely need revenue for the roads, because you're right, you know, we need to do maintenance on those things. But on the other hand, I think it's, I think it's important that we have some degree of parity between cars and users of the road, because whether they're big vehicles or they're Dodge, or they're diesel trucks, they're, they're, they are damaging the road.
Right.
And personally, I don't think it's fair that, that one set of automobiles pays for the other set. And that's what's going on, locally, not statewide or federal, locally.
I, I understand your point. The other thing that I found research, and I, I'm, I'm not sure whether it's true, because I didn't have much time, but the sales tax, I understand, is greater on diesel fuel than it is on gasoline. Does anybody know if that's true?
There's no sales tax. There's no sales tax on fuel.
Yeah, there's only fuel tax, there's no sales tax.
Okay. So.
Which is my point to John, and the, the, going back to the issue of raiding the general fund, is that you pay sales tax into the general fund, and you don't pay any, but now if you're going to pay, if you're going to continue to do that, you're paying not only a gas tax, but you're paying again on a sales tax basis. It should be one revenue stream, in my view, anyway, but, this is Roger, correct?
Right.
I think, you know, that's, that's kind of where we are.
Assuming that this would pass, not only here locally in this board, but in, in the, in the Senate or state legislature, then when it comes back to implementation, I believe it was two-thirds of the, of the board, or a public vote, would the, would the governing board here locally put it out to a local vote? Or would they hold that voting power within these chambers?
I can't answer that.
Well, let, let me be honest with you, I think we're so desperate for revenue, we'd probably try the board first, but I'm not speaking for them, I'm speaking for me.
Yeah, okay. Well, that was my two cents.
Well, it's a good two cents.
Thank you very much for your time.
Welcome.
Thank you, Roger, for coming.
For taking an interest in this, and thank you for, you know, taking some time to do some due diligence on it. We look forward to seeing you in more meetings here, if you'd like to attend.
Okay, well, I, I hope I can contribute more to the community later on.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for that, and again, welcome to Carson City. All right, all right. Any other public comment? All right, motions in order.
I, I would just like to add one thing, and that is that I really appreciate a new citizen coming forward and giving us his, his thoughts on these things before we act, thank you.
2019 R3.
19 R3. I move to adopt resolution number 2019 dash R3.
There's a motion and a second, and a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Where's mine? There it is. Aye, okay, passed, all right. Where'd that go? Was it, okay. All right, let's take up, where are we now? 25 Charlie. This is Assembly Bill 3. You want to take us through these?
Yes, so we also, like you said, we have Wes Henderson here, who's the executive director of the Nevada League of Cities.
Come on up, Wes.
Put him in the hot seat. So for the most part, these bills don't really affect Carson City, since we are both a city and a county. And first of all, AB 3, so it allows the governing body of an incorporated city to request the Department of Taxation to issue one or more medical marijuana establishment certificates for the operation of a medical marijuana dispensary that's located in the incorporated city. Currently, the county is allowed to have two certificates. So this would allow us, as a city, to request more. I'm interpreting, hopefully I'm interpreting that correctly.
Before you jump in, Wes, let me, let me just say this, before we get too far down the road on this one. My, my sense is, this might be one where we kick it back to staff to monitor, to make sure that this doesn't get expanded beyond what we've already done here in Carson City. Because I don't think we have a dog in the fight with respect to cities asking more. This comes out of Wendover, West Wendover, because they don't. And Fernley, maybe the same thing, I don't know. Wes, you want to talk about that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and members of the Board of Supervisors. For the record, I'm Wes Henderson, the executive director of the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities. The impetus for this bill came, it was based more on the retail licenses. When question two was passed by the voters that legalized recreational marijuana, it had a provision that listed the number of retail stores that were allowed per county, based on population. But then it has a provision that says that the Department of Taxation, who oversees the marijuana program, can issue additional licenses at the request of a Board of County Commissioners. So the, the reason we put this bill in there is because, you know, a, a city should also be able to request an additional license from the Department of Taxation without having to go through the county commission. So this bill doesn't apply to, to Carson City, because you already have that authority as a county commission, okay? And then we added the piece to increase the, the medical marijuana dispensaries, because some of our members have enacted ordinances that says you can't have a license to sell adult-use marijuana unless you're co-located in it with a medical facility. So, so the, and part of that was to make sure that Nevada maintains a viable medical marijuana program, and that medical marijuana patients have, you know, ready access to their, to their medicine. That, that, that was the impetus for this bill. Since, since that time, we have been made aware of an instance in east, northeastern Nevada, where during the last line of, of retail licenses that were issued, there was two firms that wanted to put a retail store in, in a city, and were told they could not, because there was already, the, the limit had already been reached for that county. And this is in a county that is very anti-marijuana, so there was no way to get it, so. And again, like I said, an incorporated city shouldn't have to go to the county commission and say, hey, would, would you please ask taxation to give us a license? So that was the impetus for this bill. But as I said, it really doesn't affect Carson City, because you do already have that authority to request additional licenses.
Yeah, and this is an interesting one, because I think this board has made it clear that we're not really in favor of any additional dispensaries. Plus, we already have an ordinance in place that says you have to co-locate, you have to have a medicinal license and a retail license, and they have to be co-located. In this particular case, I think you could probably twist my arm and get me to agree to remain neutral on this, but I, I don't see us ever supporting it.
That's why I'm suggesting what we do is, because these things have a propensity to morph around. I think the, the wiser course of action is to watch this type of legislation so that it doesn't affect Carson City, because we're already by ordinance where we are on medical marijuana and recreational, whatever you want to call it, marijuana, so. But that's, that's my sense, is that we should do that, but it's up to the board.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to what Brad said earlier, which is if we monitor, and, and it goes away we don't want, then we can go from neutral to no. But right now, monitor seems the one for me.
Unless there's an objection, then I'll kick this one back to staff to make sure we watch what's going on on this type of legis, this legislation. I know you're watching all the marijuana legislation anyway, but on this one, let's do. Yeah, shoot, go, go.
Actually, I want to ask a question on this. Is NACO taking a position on AB 3? Because it could indeed put a city against a county, so the county ordinance is, we're not going to allow it. But now you're saying that the city would be able to do it even though the county said no, correct?
Correct.
So, NACO has not taken a position?
NACO has not taken a position on this, and back in the 2017 session, we were able to get a bill passed that would allow for additional medical marijuana licenses for, for an incorporated city and a county under 100,000 that didn't have one. And that, that bill was passed in too, because there, there were limits on the medical marijuana licenses as well.
Okay.
I'm just saying that we're lucky, I guess, in Carson.
Well, we're lucky for a number of reasons, and I should have told that to Roger.
I can see this going down the road.
Yeah, you know, the, the, back in 1969, when Mayor Robertson and his board made us, you know, consolidated city and county, that was a master stroke.
Amen to that.
Master stroke, so, board, is it okay if we just kick this back to staff?
Yeah.
All right, monitor this one, okay? Got it? Nancy? Are you, you're looking at me like?
I was following Adriana. Do you want him to remove Dr. Pintars?
If you could remove, yes, because it, on camera, on the other one, on camera, there we go.
Nope, that's fine.
That one's yours. Sorry, just making sure, I, I got to report that on camera, you have.
Yeah, when you said goodbye, you were supposed to put your bag down.
Oh, good, I'll put this here too. Would you let Furlong know that?
He's been replaced.
He's been replaced by this good-for-nothing mayor, so. All right, take up 18 then. by this good-for-nothing mayor? So, all right, take up eighteen then.
All right, so this one also, for the most part, doesn't affect Carson City because, okay, in talking with the Public Works Director, because we as the county own about ninety-eight percent of the the right-of-way, I'll let Wes take.
Thank you again, Wes Henderson, for the record. Assembly Bill eighteen would add language to NRS two sixty-eight, which affects cities, NRS two sixty-nine, which affects town, and NRS three eighteen, which is general improvement districts, to allow for the installation, maintenance, and rehabilitation of ADA-compliant ramps in a public right-of-way or a utility easement. I think that's, I think that's the piece that will affect Carson City because it would be in two sixty-eight then. As you know, when you construct a new sidewalk or you rehabilitate a sidewalk, you have to bring it up to compliance with ADA. This is a method to simplify the process and speed it up where you don't have to track down all the individual owners of the utility easements to go into their easement. We're talking maybe twelve to twenty-four inches of additional concrete to accommodate the ADA-compliant ramp. This legislation is modeled on a bill that was passed during the two thousand seven session that allows an RTC to go into a right-of-way or utility easement to install a bus stop. And we basically cut and pasted the language from this to, and I said that the goal is to simplify and speed up the process of installing and maintaining the ADA-compliant ramps.
Okay. I don't know that it hurts us to support this.
I'm okay with supporting it.
I think that makes sense. We don't need to contact every single owner because we have to legally do it. I agree with this one. I don't have a problem doing a motion on that.
Public comment? I don't see any. You want to make a motion?
Sure.
I move to support AB eighteen.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Questions in order.
Yeah, just a question. This kind of goes against my sense of the need for transparency a little bit. Am I wrong in saying that? Not letting them know what's going on?
Generally, generally in an easement anyway, it's already in a spot that whoever owns the easement knows that activities and work can go on there. So I don't feel like it's being subversive.
Well, you don't want to notify them on a particular situation. Okay.
They want their sidewalks repaired anyway.
Yeah.
It's just going to get a little more concrete because of the ADA.
Just being cautious.
All right, any other discussion on this? Ready for a vote? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried. Okay, let's take the last one up. Senate Bill ten. You want to tell, Wes, why don't you just cut right to the chase? Tell us what's going on here.
Senate Bill ten would not affect Carson City at all. It is a.
I'm sorry, for the record, tell us what it is so that everybody knows what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Senate Bill ten would increase the caps that are currently in place to what a member of a Board of Trustees for a general improvement district can be paid. There is currently bifurcated. There's a six thousand dollar cap, and then there's a nine thousand dollar cap if a general improvement district is authorized to provide garbage, water, and sewer. That's the difference. This would increase those caps from six thousand to nine thousand, and from nine thousand to twelve thousand. The six thousand dollar cap was set in nineteen seventy-seven. The nine thousand dollar cap was created is when they bifurcated the types of GIDs. That was in two thousand and five, and it haven't been changed since then. The bill also contains language that says for the purpose of this section, compensation means salary and wages only. The concern that brought this bill up is with the increase in PERS contributions, some of our GID members are, think, some of our GID members are not in compliance right now if compensation includes PERS. So that's why we brought the bill forward for two reasons. One, to, you know, bring the dollar amounts up to, you know, at least closer to current levels than they are now, and also to give clarity on what compensation means in that section.
Any other que, I mean, this is one where we probably want to just.
Monitor.
Monitor. A public comment on this? I don't see any, unless there's objection, board will kick this back to staff to monitor it. Okay, we got any other NACO or league bills?
That's all of them.
That's all. Wes, you and I are going to be together on next Thursday, and that's where the League of Cities and Municipalities is putting together a presentation on who and what it is and what it does. I'll be there with you whenever that time is. It's the Assembly Government Affairs. Anybody else wants to go there and listen, it's fine.
Yes, sir.
Next Thursday.
And our Assembly Bill eighteen will also be heard that day, so.
Okay. All right. We got that. Okay. Thanks, Wes, for coming on over. Now you go back to the.
Thank you.
All right. Go back to Fun Town. Thanks. All right, let's take up item twenty-six and the Board of Supervisors' non-action items. Nancy, do we have review, status review?
I had nothing else for today on bills.
Okay. Any board members? Go.
For future agenda items, so I'd like Assembly Bill two fourteen, agendized for action. That is Al Kramer's bill, Assemblyman Kramer's bill on the prison preservation for Nevada State Prison. So I'd like that as an action item. And then would you also notify Mr. Glenn Wharton so that he can be here when that's going to be agendized, the president of that society? And then also Assembly Bill five that deals with master plans. I'd like that one to be agendized for potential action and see what the impact of that is on master planning.
I've got a couple of lights on here. Stacy, you go, then John.
So I just wanted to mention that CTA, the Cultural Commission, as you know, was able to get parasols and artwork at the Reno Tahoe Airport. They've got a grand opening next Tuesday night. Thank you. But it's already installed. They've seen pictures of it. It's been in, I saw some pictures of it online. It looks wonderful. The parasols are amazing. And according to the airport folks, they already love what Carson City did, and they already are programming us for the future. So if you get a chance to go up there and see it, I'll be seeing it Tuesday morning when I fly to Vegas. But, but anyway, you should go up and take a look at it. It's great, great, great publicity for Carson, especially during this legislative session.
Thank you for that, Stacy. That's a great move for us. I don't want to be a downer, but I brought it up earlier. I'm concerned about a snow removal, the NID didn't do its job as far as I can tell in the last snowstorm by getting out, and businesses were doing their own snow removal. I'm concerned that we have an ordinance that says people need to shovel their walks, and we didn't shovel our walks in many places. I think this needs to be talked about in our budget upcoming, and I just put that on the table so everyone can think about doing that. And I'm concerned about that in the downtown in terms of when it's nice out, we still get litter everywhere.
Stacy and I had our water subconservancy meeting last night, and just for the general public's knowledge, as of February fifteenth, so about six days ago, the Sierra snowpack was at a hundred and seventy-six percent of average.
Carson River Basin.
Carson River Basin. The rest of the basins are in about that same range. So, so far, so good.
I also saw something tack on to that, that if the water season or the winter season ended today, we'd still end at a hundred and forty-four percent of normal. So we're in good shape.
If we got no bone of precipice, you mean? I see.
Anything else? Okay, a couple of things. First, following up on what Stacy said, there will be an event at the Reno Airport next Tuesday night at five thirty?
Five thirty?
I think it is, just a minute.
You need to RSVP because it's behind security.
Well, you need to RSVP and go in because you got to go up the escalator stairs. It's right at the top of the departing escalator stairs, right up there. You need to RSVP if you.
If you don't want to have to buy a ticket.
You got to be flying.
Yeah.
To whom do we RSVP? The airport?
No, Nancy.
It's in the Sea Concourse.
It's in the, it's right, you know, when you go through TSA.
Yeah, you have to go past security, so I.
Pass security, go up the escalator right there. That little, there's an alcove in that area. That's where it is. That's where this is going to be.
And I think they can contact the city manager's office, or it might be online too, because you have to give your name and and other things in advance.
And you're given a pass. You're going to have to be given a pass, otherwise you can't pass security.
Yeah.
You can try, but good luck.
I don't know. They got a pass, but your name will be on a list. So.
Right, you should probably have your ID also.
Just work through.
Just let Nancy know. She'll hook you up.
She'll hook you up. That's fine, yeah. She'll hook you up. That's good. And I'll be there to, I'm going to say a few words that night. I invited the mayor of Reno to be there, and she can't come. So this is a Carson City event, and as John said and Stacy said, this is a wonderful event for Carson City. I mean, it's a great thing to have, you know, Carson City showcased in that area at the airport. And hopefully, it's stuff to come. It's a harbinger of things to come. And speaking of the airport, I met, I met with the director of the USO Services in Nevada on Friday, and I believe that there's going to be a kind of a mobile USO service put in at the Reno Airport. It's not going to, they don't really have room for a actual room. I mean, they sort of have one, but I think that's going to happen. Also, back on, on things that are going on Monday, this coming Monday night at five thirty, we're having the legislative reception for all four counties at the Martin Hotel. Everybody ought to be there for that. I mean, we ought to have a good showing for that one. And staff members, anybody can come. It'll be the other Lyons, Story, and Douglas as well. So we go down there.
It's five or five thirty?
Well, let's see. It's, I can tell you. It is. I have five. Sorry, five. It's five o'clock. Excuse me. Five o'clock, five o'clock. Okay. Tuesday at the airport, the ribbon cutting for Squeeze-In will be at nine thirty on March, on March first. It's going to be there.
Mayor, I have one more thing on the airport. You have to RSVP, RSVP no later than tomorrow, the twenty-second, and you can visit, it's carson.org/takingflight in order to RSVP.
Carson.org/takingflight. Okay. And then another ribbon cutting will be cutting the ribbon on Carson Kids Dental. It's out on Williams Street. That's on Thursday at five thirty. There will be a, Monday morning at eight o'clock, there'll be a discussion about the indigent, the right to counsel bill that came out of the Right to Counsel Commission that I sat on as a NACO representative. It's had a few bumps in the road, but the key issue there is for the rural counties and for all of us, primarily affects the rural counties, is that we want to make sure that if the rules change with respect to what is required to provide competent indigent defense under the Constitution, that the counties be held harmless from that. Because in my view, that type of service, actually indigent defense services in general are a state obligation. They put it on the counties. But if they're going to change, you know, if they're going to do things that require different, a different approach to how we deliver indigent services, then we need to know that, you know, we're not going to be put in the frying pan with money that we don't have. So I was got an email or a text or whatever this is this morning saying, I think some of those issues have been resolved, but that's the primary issue that's driving there. So we'll see where that goes Monday. One last thing, I don't know how many people read the Ralston Report, their little paper they put out, where Ralston, John Ralston said, you know, there was, he pointed his nugget, one of his nugget things to show that Carson City was forty-sixth in the state capitals, primarily because our land prices are going up here and stuff like that, while our quality of life analysis was we were number eight or number ten, something like that, in quality of life among those. But I took the opportunity to send down to the editor of the Ralston Report, a copy of the Milken Institute finding that we're in the top, that Carson City's in the top performing, in the top one hundred top-performing cities in the United States, and also mentioned that Reno is in the top performing for large cities. So, and to his credit, he sent back a note saying Carson City is always number one in his view. So how's that?
And he put it in print.
In print and print. But I got his text. Okay. I think.
It's true, he's a good politician, better than, I won't say that.
I think that's it. Sorry for the long, long discussion. Go.
And I don't know if we can have an update or impact potential on the risk assessments for bail. I know that the Supreme Court's working on that, but is that going to be whose responsibility to implement that? And there's a change? And is there going to be any cost center to us?
That's a good point. I attended the last meeting at the Supreme Court along with Tad and along with Dagny at NACO. We're going to get that, that's going to be pushed down. You know, the issue of bail is probably going to take a major change so that you'll do, you won't be charged in so many people bail. You'll do a risk assessment, and if they're not a high risk or something like that, then.
Just let them go.
Just let them go until it come time to show up. But I think, you know, Laurie, you're absolutely right. That's going to get shoved down on us. Mr. Fletcher says, you know, that may be two additional people in his group in order to monitor that, that type of, if that really, if that happens, and I think it's going to happen. So I haven't looked, I haven't gone down the road, and I don't know if anybody else has, you know, how it gets to two. But I think it's definitely going to be an increase in cost for oversight of that.
Yeah, he came up with the two based on the number of hours that it would take to do the number of assessments that they're estimating would come through the door.
What I'm interested in is who's doing an assessment now that sets the bail amount? Where's the shift? Because somehow you're just having, somebody's giving the judge some report or some.
The judge has set that bail right now.
But.
I mean, there's a.
There's no baseline or somebody doing any work to.
Bail schedule. Dan, you want to, who does the bail schedule?
I'm interested in what's, who's changing and shifting what workload.
I am a civil attorney, so I don't know too much about bails, and I don't want to, I think I probably only know just enough to make myself really dangerous and accidentally mislead this board. So I think I'll just stay quiet on this. I think my answer is I don't know.
My recollection is that when you were generally talking about misdemeanors, right? And so it's a set bail, well, it's a set bail amount on the felonies, then they do have to do an assessment. And I believe state-prone probation does those assessments.
That's what I'm interested in is where's the shift in the workload and what impact it has to us?
Yeah, Ted is estimating that each assessment will take twenty to thirty minutes.
I've seen the assessment.
And I think it's a fifteen pay or fifteen-question form that they have to go through. And they don't have people that are trained to do this assessment at this time. So they'd also have to go through special training.
So does, and it's not legislation, from what I'm understanding, he's just going to force it through.
This is administrative dock of the Supreme Court.
With no fiscal impact.
Mayor, just based on my conversation with Tad, he says that if his department doesn't do it, then it'll fall on the sheriff's office, and that will take sheriffs off the streets.
Well, you know, and this is one of those things, you know, this is just a personal thought, you know. The issue there is whether or not the imposition of bail, particularly on misdemeanors, is fair to everybody, because one person can afford a hundred-dollar bail, another person can't. Why are we doing that? And you'll get a contrary argument from the bail bonds folks. But I think that throughout the country, we're looking at, you know, are we being unfair to a certain segment of the population that can't otherwise afford bail? They're going, they're getting incarcerated, and while others who can, you know, take a hike or take a walk until their trial comes up. So my sense is it's the right thing to do, but that can change if I know how much money it's going to cost us. That's the sad part about it. But anyway, I think, I think, Laurie, you're absolutely correct. This is going to happen. I don't know when, but it's going to happen.
Well, and do we know about administrative assessments? If those are going to be Well, and do, do we know about administrative assessments? If those are gonna be incorporated into that and changed? Because if they are, then, then there's additional costs there as well.
That's what I, I guess I'm getting to, Stacy, is that you're gonna get an administrative action from the Supreme Court that says you will do this, but there's no mechanism to pay for the shift.
What I'm saying is right now, our district court's got a lot of funding from administrative office of the courts. So if they're doing away with bail, are they also doing away with or reducing the administrative assessments, which create revenue? And then we would also have to backfill, you know?
Yeah. No, I, I just like a presentation and some stuff on that. Thank you.
I haven't heard, we can do that. I haven't heard that, that, that they're, they're gonna tinker with the administrative assessments because that's really on the fine side. I mean, if you're gonna get fined, not the bail side. But, uh, anyway.
They also can't pay, but yes.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. I mean, it's one of those things. Uh, but it's something we gotta watch and, uh, we're probably gonna have to ink in on it. Okay, anything else? I took a long time here. I'm sorry, folks. All right, are we ready to, uh, take a break until we come back tonight at twenty-seven? All right. We'll be in recess until one thirty.